Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, September 10th, Issaquah Council Study Session, the first of the new format of study session. So excited to be working this this evening. We will be taking, well, first off, let me back up step. So study sessions, the way these are going to work is we are actually going to be rotating which council member will be running these. So I'm doing the first one and then it'll go to Mariah and the next one. And then I think it's alphabetical after that. But very excited about the content. I will say that at least for this evening, what we'll do is we will have presentations from city staff and we will ask technical questions. And then we will take public comment, the way we always have in the past and hopefully always will. And then we will have a, these are both IDs, not action or not agenda bills, but there is some sort of deliberation or conversation that we're going to be having. And we'll do that after we take public comments. We understand if there's anybody here who wants to speak to us on this issue before we have an internal discussion on that. Councilmember Winterstein, did you have a question?
No, I just want to add something when you're done.
I'm done.
And I think for the public, I want to add that these are now in lieu of our regular former committee meetings, so infrastructure, land and shore, and services and safety. So every other Tuesday, 6:30 here, second and fourth Tuesdays of the month, this is where you can watch us make sausage.
All right, thanks. And with that, we will move directly into ID 0474, utility rate study results, with Bob York, engineering manager, and Josiah Close, consultant. Welcome.
Good evening, council members. Pleased to be the launch customer for this new format and look forward to our presentation. I'm Robert York, engineering manager for Public Works Engineering and soon to arrive, but he's probably caught in traffic, is Sheldon Lynn also. Okay, he's here. We're here tonight to present the findings and recommendations from the 2019 utility rate study. This study was authorized by council as part of the 2019 budget process. Included in the packet is an informational memorandum describing low-income household utility assistance program offered by the city. By way of quick background, the city last adopted an utility rates and charge adjustments for water, sewer, and stormwater utilities at the regular council meeting back in November of 2015. This was Agenda Bill 7064. The rate increases resulting from council decisions became effective on January 1st, 2016. Those rate adjustments, including adjustments to the one-time general facility charges, were adopted for a five-year period that will end on December 31st, 2020. Our request tonight is that council consider and provide direction on proposed updated utility rates and charges for the period from 2020 through 2024. As described in the staff report, there are at least three options for your consideration. Number one would be to direct the administration to repair Agenda Bill for council action with ordinances that would adopt the proposed rates and start charges for each of the three utilities. This is the action recommended by the administration. The action on the proposed rates would be requested at a regular council meeting that's currently scheduled for October 21st. This is due, this is selected in order to add the proposed rates to be incorporated into the 2020 budget. The second option would be to direct the administration to look at adjustments to our rates and charges schedule. This would be, the assumption would be that the adjustments would still provide the projected revenue requirements for each utility. If this option were chosen, staff would rapidly make changes and if needed, come back to you with proposed adjustments with the idea of, and goal of still adopting rate adjustments in a timely fashion to be incorporated into the 2020 budget. A final option would be to direct the administration to consider ways to reduce the revenue needs with the goal of lowering future rates and charges. The impact of this option would likely require reconsideration of the timing, number, and scope of projects that are included in the recently approved 2020 to 2025 CIP and also in the adopted water system plan. Note that this would take time and would likely impact the progress of at least two major water utility projects in 2020. So here tonight is, to present the findings of our utility rate study is Josiah Close. He's a financial analyst with HDR. Assisting Josiah would be, will be Judy Dean, a senior financial analyst also with HDR, who especially is in the area of general facility charges. So Josiah, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks, everyone, for the opportunity to update you on the preliminary results we have for the water, sewer, and stormwater rate studies. We're going to look at, let's go ahead here. We're going to look at the rate study process in general and show you what we think about and the variables that go into that. We're going to look at the key assumptions other than budget that is impacting these for each utility. And we'll look at the draft results and provide those to you all. Judy's going to do a similar process for the GFCs and go through their definition and purpose and then how we develop those. And then we'll have the discussion at the end for you all to provide feedback to us. So in general, we want to make sure that the rates and fees provide adequate revenue for the utilities to operate, both capital and the O&amp;M expenses for day-to-day things. They go at them slightly differently, but they both have that same goal in mind, to keep the utility whole and to create equity among all customers, current and future, and among the different classes. We want to make sure that we use a cost basis to maintain that equity and provide for that for all customers. So we utilize a specific process that'll go through to make sure that we account for all those expenses and do this in a very organized way so that we can provide that to the customers, that level of service. As far as financial metrics, there's some critical ones that we look at. Debt service coverage ratio, especially for the water utility, will be a big component that's driving rates. We want to make sure that we have adequate revenue coming in, both now and in the future. The rating agencies will look at these documents, the reports for the rate study and GFC to make sure that the utilities are running a way that they can provide that revenue stream in the future. So they'll want to see those revenue adjustments. And that can affect your borrowing terms as well for other projects in the future. So it's important to look at that. We also want to make sure we're rate funding capital, so cash on hand, paying into the system, the renewal and replacement projects. You know, you don't want to take a loan out to put oil in the car or change your tires. You want to make sure you're investing in the system on an annual basis to maintain it. Then we also want to make sure we have reserves. You all have policies around those and we want to make sure that those are met because they can accomplish a few different goals. You have cash flow requirements that may help between the billing of customers and the receipt of the revenue. You'll have the debt service fund, which as we issue more debt for projects, we'll need to make sure that that's adequately funded as well. And then you do have those minimums that you'll just want to maintain. But again, those are minimums, so we want to keep that in mind. And with water, with such large capital projects, we recently worked for Oak Harbor with their wastewater treatment plant. And they had a number of, you know, cost changes and allocation changes that had they not had the reserves and good policies around that, it would have been, you know, going back to customers for more rate increases. So that's something we want to try to avoid if at all possible. So when we have large projects like SPAR and the treatment plant, we just want to make sure that those are all met. So to go over the process a little bit, we have two manuals that we use. For water, it's the AWWA M1 manual, and for wastewater, it's the Manual Practice 27. And these outline the general steps that we take to do a comprehensive rate study. For this study, we did a revenue requirement and then a rate design. The revenue requirement essentially looks at the revenues that you bring in at current rates and compares those to the expenses, both capital and operating, to see if there is a balance or deficiency of funds. And that's where we will then develop a level of revenue adjustment that may be needed to fully fund the utility. There's another components that we'll go through, like rate funding of capital that'll be added into there that aren't an expense necessarily, but they, you want to build that capacity in the rates to achieve those objectives as you go forward. Again, we'll meet those, the financial planning criteria that I laid out before, when we develop the revenue requirement for each utility. And we'll look at, we looked at 10 years for each utility with a five-year rate setting period. Not so that we can see things like the SPAR reservoir, which is outside five years, but we want to plan for it in times to minimize any rate shock or impacts to customers and create a more smooth transition over time.
Councilmember Winterstein, you have a question?
I do. Before we move too far past your top bullet right there, this might be for Bob or maybe even for Sheldon or somebody else in the audience. I appreciate you, you talked about how you looked at forecasted revenues and compared to them expenses, both operational and capital. At what point in this process are we going to get a good understanding of actually the expense side of this? And has the organization actually looked at, how do I match my forecast, how do I adjust my expenses to match my forecasted revenue, especially on the operating side? And maybe we're going to get that later, but I just want, I want to make sure we, somewhere in this process, before we're voting on this, I'd like to understand that. Because it essentially, we're talking about the budget for an independent enterprise, more or less. And I don't want to look at revenue adjustments without understanding the work put in to manage the expenses. And I real, and again, I think operational, I recognize there's some capital involved and we're going to get into those details. But in total, this is like a budget for an enterprise, each one of these things.
Excellent question. Yes, later in the presentation, Josiah will talk about revenues and expenditures for the utility over the next five-year period. You'll actually see some graphics that show curves that show those expenditures, as well as the revenue needed to support them. And in an effort to help balance the rates and levelize them a bit, HDR did incorporate significant debt financing and so forth to keep the rates at a reasonable level. So you will see that information.
Okay, and just to be clear, it's like we're dealing with one lever. We're dealing with the revenue lever and not the expense lever at all. And obviously, we have to, we have to plan appropriately and we have to develop balanced budgets and we have to be consistent with our financial policies. But it sounds like all this work is just adjusting the revenue and expenses just are what they are. Sheldon, I realize you might not have the answer, but I think this is something that's going to be very important. I will be looking at this through the lens of this is an enterprise and we're asked to take a look at its budget as proposed, and there is both revenues and expenses. I realize this is a rate study and I know that we have a capital plan and some projects planned, but I really, for full evaluation, I think we do need a clear picture on the analysis done on the expense side. Thank you.
And we will look at, because we did the study in 2014, I believe, and so what we did, part of developing the expense projection is looking at what did we say we would spend in 2019 back then and what did we spend through the budgeting process now? And look at adjusting our escalation factors to kind of meet that. So we did look at, in that sense, I don't know if that addresses it at all. We try to keep up with inflation, obviously, and so we did have the benefit of doing a recent rate study to help us guide what those different line item percentages would be. So some key assumptions going into this, we started with the 2019 budgets for each utility. We have, again, the inflationary factors that I talked about, the line items, each salaries, benefits, things like that will go up at different rates. So we'll use either industry standard or results from looking at where your expenses have been over the last few years to fine-tune those escalation factors. The current rates that are in place for 2020 that were adopted previously will be unchanged for sewer and for stormwater. It'll only be in water that there'll be any difference. Another impact was the cost allocation changes to the water, sewer, and stormwater enterprises, things like HR and emergency management, some different cost changes. So those impacted the utilities differently depending on where they sat in the analysis and their level of revenue as well. The capital plan is fairly significant. We utilized the recently adopted 2020 through 25 CIP, as well as knowledge of other future projects. And we developed a funding plan around that. The total is about $61.1 million for 2020 through 2024. So definitely large investments in rehabilitating the current system, keeping that level of service up, and then as well, some improvements.
Councilmember Walsh.
So you talked about the cost allocations for things like HR, and that's a big difference that we're considering in our overall budget this year. I'd like to get a sense of how much that's shifting than cost from our general fund to the utilities and how that's affecting rates.
Okay.
So I don't know, is that coming in at some point?
I don't have that breakdown of those newer components, but I can definitely, we can get that to you if that's something you'd be interested in.
Yeah, thank you.
Some unanticipated impacts. We had the PFOS, PFAS treatment, which the costs were, related to that, were approximately $2 million for water. So there is some regaining lost ground there that we'll have to go through. Other major drivers, as I mentioned earlier, were target reserve levels and debt service coverage, prudent financial metrics that we want to have in place and make sure we're following if we're going out for revenue bond issuances in the future. Those rating agencies like Moody's and S&amp;P will definitely be looking at these documents for that. And with that, we'll jump into the water rate study preliminary results. Here you can see a summary of the capital plan, 2019, about $2 million. We typically like to see around accumulated depreciation. I believe it's slightly above that for the water utility. But then you can see in 2020, there's a large jump there from SPAR Booster project, as well as preliminary design on the treatment plant, property acquisition, some other projects. And you can see we go down a little bit. There's a dark red on the bottom that is cash funding, and that's that rate funding that we like to see from the utilities, that we're not just borrowing for all capital improvements, we're investing at current rate levels into those. We have the assumed borrowing in 2020 and '22. That's just for modeling purposes. We would fine-tune that with an FA to make sure that the timing and rates and terms will be optimized for that. And then we also have the use of capital reserves in '21 and '23. I realize that it's kind of hard to see the color differences between the gray and the blue there, and then '24. And part of that are proceeds from the revenue bond issuances, just because we don't want to issue every year. It's not economical to do that because of issuance cost. But you can see it is a substantial capital improvement plan. The next slide shows reserves for the water utility. We start out in a pretty good spot and with the heavy capital program that we have, as well as the debt issuance, you can see we do utilize quite a bit of funds there and there's some up and down motion. And that's, again, with the timing of the projects and all, it's important to make sure that we maintain reserves at a good level to make sure that, you know, you accomplish all your different goals. That's why we haven't broken up there. Moody's medians, or, excuse me, Fitch medians, they, a AAA rated utility is about 420 days of O&amp;M cash on hand. So that would put you guys around $10.5 million for '19. So it's definitely not on the higher end of reserves, but you can see over time, and especially with the bond reserve growing to what it is, that's not cash available for things. You also have the operating fund. You want to make sure that you have cash flow for expenses. So, but it is a reasonable projection of reserves, I think. This is a summary of the revenue requirement by component. The dark gray box is your O&amp;M expenses. Above that, in the orange, you have net debt service. We'll have taxes and transfers. Some of those cost allocations are in the green. And rate-funded capital is above that in the blue. And that dash line going through it is revenues at your current rates. And what you can see in water, it's not as much because the adopted increase is three and a half, but it does bump up in 2020. But as you go out over time, you can see the increase in O&amp;M costs and all the other costs erode the current rate revenues. And so there is going to be a need for a revenue adjustment in order to fully fund the expenses of the water utility.
Councilmember Ray.
All right, you lost me there on revenue.
Yeah.
Because I don't understand why revenue would decline. And that line looks maybe flat, but it looks like it's declining.
There is a decline in there. One thing is there's some cost allocation around, the water utility holds a bond for the, I think it's the Corp yard in which other utilities, they have a cost allocation to water for that, and it shows up as miscellaneous revenue. So when that bond goes away, the revenues go away as well.
Are we expecting no population growth in this five-year period that would affect revenue?
We are.
About the 3% increase in?
Yeah, we are. I think it's, the scale of it is not enough to change what that is.
I'd like to see the numbers at some point.
Yeah. Are there questions on the revenue requirement? So to look at some bill impacts for, this is with a 3/4 inch service meter and 12 CCF usage bimonthly. Currently, your rates, under your current rates, it would be $78.74. With the adopted rate adjustments from the prior study, it would be $81.49 or a $2.75 change bimonthly. With the proposed revenue adjustments there, you can see in 2020, it would go up to $86.38, or about $4 a month, and that holds true for the remainder of the time period. Again, some of the impacts we had were the cost allocations, and there was additional staff needed for the water treatment plant, as well as O&amp;M expenses that we assumed. So that as well hit the O&amp;M side of things. And maintaining the strong financial metrics, you can see where the debt service coverage ratio, the top, that bottom chart there, the top row before the proposed rate increases, currently have, I believe it's a 1.5 target. And that means when you take away O&amp;M expenses from your revenues, your target is to have 1.5 the amount of your debt service to cover that. And that doesn't include any capital investment in the system. And so you can see as you go out over time, it goes down below, below one means you can't pay the debt service. And zero, obviously, is even worse off. So under the proposed rates, you can see we maintain around that 1.7, 1.8-ish range in most of the years and keep a strong outlook for the utility.
I have a question at a high level.
Yeah.
So how, if a member of the public says, why are my water expenses rising as fast as my healthcare? Right? This looks to me like, like the way people's healthcare is shooting through the roof, so too their water bill. How do you, what are we to say to the public when they ask that question?
Yeah, there's, as you all have probably seen, there's quite a few different things that go into it. You can see the debt service is a large part there and it grows slightly. We also bump up rate funding of capital to make sure that we don't, we decrease borrowing in the future. So we want to be at a level that we're investing in the system on an ongoing basis. Sometimes you're behind, sometimes ahead, depends on the capital plan. So a lot of this is long-term funding needs of the utility. The debt service goes out for, you know, 20, 30 years, depending on the terms.
So something that I'll mention to Acting City Administrator Snyder is that when we do budgets, I like to see the per capita costs in real dollars. And so I would love to do that on this as well. I suspect from what you're saying is we'll see that the per capita cost in real dollars had been decreasing and now we're going to catch back up. But it's, this isn't for you as much as it's for her. It's important to understand that. So as we're having our conversations with people, we can show the real cost of infrastructure. Other questions?
Next, we'll have the proposed annual revenue adjustments there. For 2020, again, we would maintain the adopted rate adjustment of 3.5%, and we would propose another 6%. '21, it would be 9.5%. '22, 9%. '23, 8.5%. And '24, 8.5%. And if you, you take out some inflationary levels, as well as some of the impacts we had for cost allocation, you're running, you know, maybe 5%ish for the bonds, and which is about what we assumed for the level of issuance for the rate, so.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. You know, Tole, your last question, I think, was about, hey, expenses are going up. That was, we were looking at a table that showed actually what the base charge would be for a 3/4 inch to a residential unit. That expense is going up. The answer to your question was, well, because we have the revenue requirements. And I think really what the discussion has to be is because we're looking at certain expenses, we're looking at building potentially a water treatment plant. I mean, and maybe this is going to come into it, but this conversation keeps going, everything that's driving revenue, expenses is just our revenue requirements, but we're not getting into what's the requirement, what's driving those even. So I hope we can get that into this conversation somewhere soon. Thanks.
Thank you.
So you can see there, the, we proposed an across-the-board adjustment to the rate schedule, meaning all components go up at the overall adjustment. The relationships between meter sizes will remain the same, as well as between tiers. So we keep the relationship, only adjust the total level. For a local comparison, we first looked at what I'll call domestic use, essentially mostly indoor use, possibly some outdoor, but what people would use for those purposes. And with that in mind, you can see Issaquah is right in line with most of these other utilities. Obviously, some of them, it's not a perfect comparison. It could be at different spots in their capital investment in the systems and their rate studies. But in general, it's a good, quick check to see where you're at. So even with the proposed 2020 rates, you're right in line with the neighboring communities.
Yes, first, Councilmember Walsh.
So I understand what this says about our relationship to the other cities in 2020 with this new proposed change. But are other cities also seeing an 8 or 9.5% increase year-over-year after 2020?
And we don't always get that information, but there is, the city of Redmond and Renton have, those are proposed rates for 2020, so they may have some after that. But it's, it's sometimes difficult to find out what those are, but we could.
Let me ask this in a different way. This is my first year on council, so talk to me like I me like I don't know this type of stuff. Have the rates increased percent every year in the city of Issaquah? And have they done so in those cities for maybe the past five years, not even looking in the future?
Issaquah, definitely not. They haven't been that high. The, I think we were three and a half for a couple of years at the end of the previous rate study. Like I said, a typical cost escalation, like a construction cost, basic escalation is about two and a half percent a year increase in costs. So adjustments like that, utilities, it would be prudent to do just to keep up with it so that you don't have to do a large increase later. This is a little bit different because it's driven by some more capital drivers and long-term benefits to the community. It's hard to say what these other ones have done. We haven't, I haven't personally done work for these, so I'm not sure.
Okay. So let me continue on that realm to echo what Councilmember Winterstein said. I need to have a better understanding of what the expense is here and why this rate is going up in the eight to nine and a half percent. What proportion of that is due to the increased capital expenses, which I think are very easy for the public to understand and say, look, we're paying more and we're getting this out of it versus the portions that are attributable maybe to operations where that's a little bit more fluid. And then if there's other things like the cost allocation, which are new to this rate study that aren't something that we've done previously.
Thank you for the clarification. And I've noticed a theme here between a number of council members on what are the rate drivers here in this 9% drivers, right, on the expense side. As Josiah mentioned, I mean, you have the inflation, which is kind of a base around three, three and a half percent of the 9%. But what we have is an expanded capital program, as you guys have been aware of, dealing, when you adopted the water system plan, it showed two major projects, the Spar pump station and the transmission main going up, as well as a reservoir up in that corridor. It also includes a treatment plant. Those projects, the capital side, are probably on the order of about four, four and a half percent of the 9%. The other component of it is a culmination or combination of the cost allocation, as well as, as Josiah mentioned earlier, maybe briefly, is that the amount we expended on the PFOS treatment for well four and those ongoing efforts that we continue to spend money on to help address that in the aquifer and keep, you know, try and get that cleaned up. That's the other three and a half percent plus or minus. So you're in that, those are the main drivers, other than your just normal operational increases and things like that. And associated with the treatment plant, while that is capitalized through a bond issue, there are operating costs associated with that. And as I mentioned, another operational staff, and that has to be directly funded through rates. It can't be debt funded. So those are some of the major drivers. And I would say those are the major drivers of the water utility increases and for over that period of time, for about four or five years. And then you'll, then after that, the forecast is that it drops back down to around the inflationary rate is what the rate study has been indicating past the five-year period. Hopefully that answers your questions.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Quickly, to be, just so you know for sure, I absolutely recall when we did the water system plan. And we, you, we knew then that we were adopting a plan that was looking at some pretty significant capital investments. And, and these numbers are the first we've seen from a rate study. You said, okay, now how are we going to meet those obligations? My, I guess my points really are that it's, this present, this information needs to bring both of those together in a more complete manner. This is an enterprise. We got, we got inflows, we got outflows, literally money, not just water. And, and that's how I'd like to see a comprehensive picture.
Councilmember Ray.
I'm going to just pick up on Councilmember Winterstein for just a second. I think I'd like to see the numbers. I mean, the big blocking numbers are interesting, and they show direction. But this is, this is a large number. I mean, a 10% increase annually year over year is a, is a large increase. And so I'd like to see, Sheldon, the numbers that you, you just kind of highlighted, I'd like to see the specifics on those because they, there also seems to me that we should, as we grow, there should be some economies. We shouldn't always be escalating at inflation. I think we should find some efficiencies and some effectivenesses in our programs, too.
Deputy Council President Bateis.
So just to pick up on where Councilmember Ray was talking a little bit about, we've got this 9% that's coming forward, and maybe we touched on this a little bit, but we were back in like the 3.5% based on inflation. But it doesn't sound like we really had any wiggle room in terms of capital projects that might come through. And so I'm just wondering for the future, if we go forward on this 9% path, or what has been proposed? And then, and then it dips back down, just to have better, better numbers around having funds set aside as well for capital improvements that might come up in the future. I just didn't know if that's typical for it to go, you know, kind of on an even keel at three, and then up, and then, and then go back to 3%. I don't know if that made sense.
That is going to be dependent upon the capital program past this five-year period. If the utility, the next time the water system plan will be updated is in 10 years. Unless there's a dramatic change in the water utility infrastructure that drives the need for other major improvements. Josiah was mentioning that there is a cash component of the rates to fund capital replacement and things like that to help with, you know, continue to replace aging infrastructure. And so the expectation is that no, unless there's something that is a major driver that happens that we're not aware of right now, the rates would probably drop down, drop back down to the inflationary level post the five-year period, given that we would have the rates established at a rate high enough to continue with the cash funding of the projects, as well as pay the debt service. So unless there's something, an anomaly that happens, I wouldn't expect something different.
Okay. But we, okay. I think that that covered what I was thinking.
Councilmember Goodman.
So my comment is going to be a, probably a repeat of the same theme. So I read this all before I got here, and then there were comments about what was driving it. I've looked at it all again. And if I'm someone who's even on the council, but more importantly in the public, and I'm looking at this, there's nothing in here that gives me any indication of the specifics of why we're asking for a rate increase. So I would encourage the presentations to be very specific and simple about what we're looking for and why. We are looking for this rate increase because we need to fund blah, blah, blah. It's just not in here at all, which makes it really hard for us to contemplate and, you know, nearly impossible for the public to decipher whether or not they would support something like this. Thanks.
The next chart just shows more discretionary use level comparison within the local area. And this, the impacts are a little bit greater, given the structure of the rates with the conservation incentives that are there. And we kind of, that's my last water slide. Oh, go ahead.
But you're not getting away yet. Councilmember Ray.
Not yet. What's discretionary use mean? That seems very.
So more out, yeah, it's a, so the first slide was domestic, so more indoor usage. Discretionary would be considered things that aren't for hygiene or health, essentially. It would be outdoor watering usage or things like that.
But, but you don't know how people are using the water.
No.
So it's, it's, it's the, it's the rate based on more than 12 CCF, right? That, I mean, how do you, because you don't know, right, how people are actually using the water.
No, I'm saying, yeah, based on the structure there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the answer to the question is, it's the higher rate for higher use of the system.
Yes.
Okay.
But you can't use 50 CCF inside, so we assume that that's out. And that's why the tiered structure, that's the rationale behind why we typically have a tiered structure such as this, is that it isn't for health or those kind of needs. But yeah.
Councilmember Hunt.
So I wondered about, if you go back to the chart, the one that you were just showing with the CCF. Okay. So the, this consumption charge is saying that if you're paying, if you are using less CCFs, you pay less per CCF. So I think that makes sense. I would, I would though, I think it could be explained more clearly because this will impact people's bills. I mean, it could potentially also impact people's use of water and conservation of water. And then I also wondered about this 50-plus, because at 50, we're kind of like, it's a high rate, but anything above that, however extraordinary, has that rate. And so I wondered if there are examples of other cities that might have a different approach to that.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of different structures. There's, this is definitely towards the higher end, number of tier-wise. The average is probably around three. So it does have a little more granularity than some others. It's driven more by policy, how that tiers have been set up. So that's, that's why they're developed in that way. A lot of people have uniform rates in some areas as well, where all units of water are the same, whether you use 1,000 or one. So this is a very conservation-oriented rate structure, I would say.
Councilmember Winterstein.
And I'll add to that. I have, I have very specific recollection of policy-level conversations about how we're going to use with pricing incentives to conserve. It's expensive if you want to keep a really big lawn green all year during the summer here. And that's what, that's what we're doing here. And that has been, I think, a repeated decision that this and the past councils have made at a policy level.
And I would echo that as well. I remember those conversations. It's, you know, it's an odd system, right? Some of us, some of us live on Squawk where they have large yards, but people tend to not water. Other people have small yards, but they live in parts of the city where they do water. So it's, you know, it's a complicated topic. But yeah, I remember that very clearly as, as with Councilmember Winterstein, that that was a very conscious decision last time we did this. And we realized we were going to have a higher slope for higher use than other communities on the east side, and we were fine with that.
That is my last water slide. So I know we've had some discussion around, but is there any further overall water questions that you all had before we get into sewer?
Nope. Looks like you answered them.
Sorry, Acting City Administrator Snyder.
Thank you, Council President. At this point, I would like to ask the Director of Public Works, Sheldon, if you can perhaps add to the presentation. We do have some of the information that council has requested this evening, and it seems like now is a good time to discuss what are these demand drivers and to demonstrate that in some of the materials, if council is willing to get that information now. Okay.
Okay. But we'll also, it'll also be good if we at some point have a mechanism to share that with the public, either as it goes in when the full agenda bill comes before us or whatnot.
Yes, absolutely understood. Thank you. So we just may need a slight, allow us a slight pause while Sheldon's able to hook up the presentation so we can show that on the overhead and make sure that that's included with the information that the public may be receiving tonight.
Are you talking like 30 seconds or five minutes?
Yeah, like, like a minute.
A minute. Okay. We won't go into, we won't recess then. We'll just, what, Sheldon under the microscope in terms of getting that done.
Thank you.
Or Spanish Flee. The Newlywed Game? No. A preview of Friday's performance? No. It won't work without a big band behind you playing loud guitar and bass and drums. We're on it? What? Oh, from it. The Benny Hill, what's the Benny Hill song? At high speed. Right? All these references are references that several of our council members are probably like, what? I won't, I won't, I won't name any names. I'm just saying that. Probably no Teletubby songs, which I don't know, for instance. How are we doing, Director?
We're almost there.
All right.
So what I'm pulling up on the screen is actually the council action that adopted the capital improvement program this year. It was the 2020 to 2025 CIP. And I'm going to move us to the water utility. And there's a summary of the capital projects that are listed in the water utility over the coming years. And it's not showing up very well, is it? Control L? Yeah. I was going to just zoom in, is what I was going to do. So hit escape. And I was just going to hit Zoom. Thank you. So. So when you look at this, in the years 2020, 21, 22, 23, and 24, you can see that in 2020, major drivers are Spar Booster Pump Station at about $5.6 million. Water Treatment Plant's about $5.4 million. The other ones, I would say, are the cash-funded components within the rates that Josiah was referring to. And these two are planned for debt issuances and also utilizing some of the ending fund balance. I'm going to scroll down a little bit because it'll also show you the total per year. There we go. Made it. You can see in 2020, you've got about $12.7 million of improvements. 21, you have about $5.1 million. Again, major drivers in 2021 are finishing up the design work for the water treatment plant and going to, and going to advertisement for construction. Spar Booster is finishing that construction. And then there's another project up on Squawk Mountain to create a redundant feed for the water supply to go from the valley floor up to the next level on Squawk Mountain. Those are the drivers in 2021 from a capital perspective. In 2022, you enter the major construction for the treatment plant at 5.2 million. These other projects, again, are more than likely the ones that are embedded in the cash component of the capital program that Josiah mentioned. 2023, finishing up the treatment plant with major construction, beginning startup, testing, things like that. And then 2024, basically finishing out all the payments and so forth associated with the treatment plant. Coming down here in 2023, we've got a water main installation along Newport Way to help create resiliency and the like between the community within Issaquah that is west of SR 900 and further out to the Lake Mont and South Cove areas. So. So creates redundancy and resiliency for their supply as well. So you can see the major drivers from a cost perspective annually. You have $12.7 million in the first year, $5 million in '21, $7.5 in '22, and back up to $12.7 in 2023 with a $4.7 million one in 2024. As we begin the, the repair and maintenance regular cycle for the reservoirs and things like that, the last time we were doing those was about 15 years ago, and it needs to be sandblasted and painted again. And it's, it's just cycling through the normal routines for keeping the reservoirs up to snuff, as well as the wells and wellhouses. So that's, those are your drivers on the capital side. And as I mentioned with the treatment plant, there's also an operational cost with additional staff.
Questions from council members? Acting City Administrator Snyder.
So question for council, if you found that to be helpful. We can, before we move into the sewer rate study portion, as we move on to a different utility, Sheldon can run through what those capital projects are in advance of the discussion of the rate study itself to help provide some context, if council would find that helpful.
You mean, in other words, for sewer to do the same thing?
Sewer, yes.
That we just did for water?
Okay.
Sounds like Councilmember Ray has a question.
I, this is interesting, but we just did this. I mean, we just did the capital plan. These numbers are fairly fresh to me, at least. I'm more concerned about the probably 75% of the cost of the utility, which is the operating and maintenance side of it. I'd like to see a breakdown of that. So the capital I got, because, you know, we just did that and we just approved that. So it's fresh in my mind, but I would really like to see where we're spending our money on the, the operating side. So a breakdown of that by, by some of the things Sheldon, that you talked about in terms of categorization there, that would be very, more helpful to me.
Councilmember Winterstein.
I will be repeating myself, but just, I do thank, thank you very much for that information. That is a good primer on what I was looking for. My suggestion is to look at this like it's a budget. And just like for general fund, we have, we, we look at forecasted revenues and maybe new revenue sources because, and we know what those, and that information is prepared and packaged where we generally see both sides of the formula. So I would, I would think that this, in addition with the, the operational cost information put together along with the revenue justification, maybe not all of the detail that we're giving today, like you would put, like we'll see at a budget level, I think that is the type of information organized and presented in a way that I would like. I think it'll be, let me say, because I think it would be most helpful, I'm being asked to make a very important decision, and having all this information together in a comprehensive, in enough detail way to make that assessment is, is what I'm seeking. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt.
I have a request for information for a future time also, and it has to do with affordability, which I think we will also be discussing later. But one, one metric that I think would be helpful is looking at the affordability ratio and the hours of minimum wage. So Cascade Water Alliance had a study of the member cities by Texas A&M, and they looked at affordability ratio, and then they compared that across cities and the, of the member cities, as well as the hours of minimum wage. So affordability ratio would give us a sense of the percentage of disposable household income for a family of four that's going towards basic water costs. And then I think that would be helpful, as well as this hours of minimum wage, to get a sense of affordability of these rates, especially as we look at the change over time and as it's going up over time. I would like that in the future.
So back to Acting City Administrator Snyder's question. Yes, I think it would be good to briefly review the capital projects on the sewer side before we dig into the sewer side of this presentation.
Okay, thank you.
So I will go to the sewer. Unlike the water, the sewer doesn't have significant drivers in the capital program, but I'll briefly go over that. You're with me? I've got to do my little spiel here. As you can see, the sewer capital request is quite small relative to the water utility. And the numbers are quite low. In the water, I mean, excuse me, in the sewer utility. One, we're also beginning with a larger ending fund balance. That in combination with a relatively low capital program annually, the high in the five-year period is about $1.5 million for an annual expenditure. Looks like about every other year, you've got about $1 million, and then the other years, you're around $350,000. Not a major driver on the rates. You will see in Josiah's presentation about the sewer utility that we're going to actually, we're planning as part of the rate study to spend down the large balance on the ending fund for that utility to help curb any rate impacts. Question, would you like me to do the utility and then Josiah present? Or would you like me to go through the capital and then Josiah present the remaining sewer and water, sewer and stormwater utility?
I think maybe we can just take questions right now, and if there aren't any other questions, we can have him move into his presentation. So, and I, I have a question, couple of questions. Manhole rehabilitation program, aren't manholes just big round chunks of steel?
No. We actually have, believe it or not, we still have some old brick manholes in the community. And then the newer manholes aren't steel. What they are is they're actually sections of concrete that are shaped in, like, we call them barrels, but they're about four feet long, and then they're connected together. So you get leaks on, at the joints, things like that. Sometimes they're cracked for whatever reason. So there, there's some maintenance that has to occur with the manholes.
Okay. Then what is sewer, briefly, what is sewer system rehabilitation program?
What that program is, is actually for the years 2020, '21, and '22, it's finishing the relining of the sewer mains within the South Cove Greenwood Point area. Prior to that, annexation of that utility to the Issaquah utility, we had done the same program for the rest of the city. And so this is just finishing it out and relining those utilities.
All right, thank you. Other questions before they move into the presentation on sewer? Please proceed.
Going to the sewer utility, we go. And here we have, again, the summary, the revenue requirement. You see the dash line to the current rate revenues, and we have the adopted 2020 rate increase of 5.5%. And that funds the utility in 2020. As Sheldon said, we're not proposing any rate increases for that. We're going to keep the current rate increase. It's already been adopted. As we go out over time, there are some cost increases, and so you can see the current revenues aren't fully funding the utility, and there is a delta between those two there. As he mentioned as well, the reserves were utilizing those or capital projects because we did have a healthy balance there. So over time, we're minimizing the rate increases due to those reserve funds. For bill impacts, bi-monthly, currently it's $36.64 for someone using five CCF per month. And under the adopted rates, it would be $39.78. And the jump there for an average customer, it's a little higher than you can see in the out-years, '21 through '24, not only because the rate increase is smaller, but because in the last rate study, we made a concerted effort to increase the fixed portion of the rate component because we saw vulnerability in, in revenue generation there. So we only increased the fixed charge in 2020, or mostly, I should say, and you'll see that later. But in 2021 through '24, you can see it's about 50 cents per month increase. Again, the cost allocation changes did impact some of the costs there. We were able to utilize reserve funds to help pay for capital and minimize those impacts. And we, yeah, we averaged about 1.4 million over the long term for the capital investment in the system. And on the next page, I have the proposed adjustments of 2.5% for '21 through '24. And then what that looks like for the rates, you can see, like I mentioned, in 2020, it goes up for the fixed charge, the top portion there, goes from 747 to 904. Again, trying to make sure that the sewer utility had a more stable revenue generation. And then, much like the water utility, we are proposing across the board, no structure changes at this point for '21 through '24. You see it go up proportionally over time.
So, so for water, there's a meter at my house, right? How do you get centim cubic feet on sewer?
We use that as a surrogate, the water usage for, for the winter period.
So the sewer rates on the consumption side of it are based on the average use of a household in the six winter months. And so we actually track that, and that's what their sewer bill is based upon, is their average use in the winter months from a water perspective, because theoretically, all that water is going into the sewer. Because there's no outdoor water use and things like that. So we do have those records.
Got it. I'm going to ask a really dumb question, and you would think after 10 years on council, I would know this, but water that goes down the sink also goes to sewer?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Sink, shower, laundry, obviously toilets.
Well, that, yeah.
Any of your internal fixtures goes down the sewer.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you. Learn something new every day.
Councilmember Goodman.
The senior rates up there, are those all, is that the rate for all seniors, or is that the?
That's the discounted.
The low income, or is that a?
It's senior discounted.
For all seniors?
For, for low-income senior program, yeah, sorry about that. That should be.
We should probably clarify that.
Yeah.
Because I'm starting to be curious about what that age is and if I.
Hoping you would qualify? Not for a long time, I'm sure.
If I could, on that note, the senior discount, I want to remind council that there is an attachment to the staff memo that describes the process and requirements for meeting that ability to get that senior discounted rate.
And that was the, that's my last sewer slide, so if there's any other questions on sewer before we move on and look at stormwater capital, I assume?
Councilmember Winterstein.
I realize we can only manage our own sewer system, but of course, we all do collect money and pass it through to Metro. Do you have any information to share with us on what the Metro charges will be happening over this time span?
I think it's like every other year, it's 5%, I believe, for a couple of years. Is that correct, Sheldon?
I think Josiah's right. I think it's, they typically hold the rate steady for two, maybe three years, and then they increase on the order of about 5%. And I think the last increase was for this year. I think they increased it for this year. I'd have to double check, though. Let me, let me research that question and get back to you.
I would appreciate it. And to pile on just a little bit, I know we're still going to talk about stormwater, and of course, in our typical city utility bills, we have water, stormwater, and sewer lines on them to each of our customers. And I think at some point, some type of summary would be to actually see how these changes in aggregate affect the bills over this period of time for all of those utilities, including Metro. Thanks.
We actually have a comparison slide for the cumulative water, sewer, stormwater. So we compare actually also against other agencies in the same fashion. It's later in the presentation. So one moment, and I'll.
Councilmember Hunt.
I wondered if we are going to have, as part of this presentation, the information about the senior, low-income. I know that's part of our memo, and so I wondered if it was going to be later in the presentation or if it's not. And to be, because I had some comments on it.
We weren't planning on a presentation specific to that, but we'd be happy to hear any comments from council members that have read it, have questions about it. We can certainly, you know, wing it and give you some information.
We do have staff on hand that can help answer any questions that you have. If you'd like a summary of the information presented orally today, we can also provide a summary of the information that's in the memo that was attached to this item in the packet.
Okay. I, I think if, if there's a different time that's more appropriate, that would be fine with me. But I did want to just make sure that at some point, we have updated, an updated understanding of our options for those affordability programs for low-income individuals. And I also wanted to get updated information about how those programs compare to neighboring cities. And I know that previously Cascade Water Alliance did do a study looking at our rate structure, as well as rate structure of other Cascade Water Alliance cities. And then they also looked at our assistance programs. And one of the findings that stands out to me is that for water, our, our participate, our participation rate for eligible households was the lowest of all the member cities. And it, it goes into some possible barriers. So I'd like to look into that and make sure that even if we have a good program, that it's being utilized. So in the future, I would like to take a look at that.
Councilmember Walsh.
So first of all, I'd like to ask Councilmember Hunt to send the CWA recommendations. I'd love to see those. I know there is some information in the memo about our participation rate and discounts and things like that. Seems like that's a major policy discussion over this, so I'm kind of surprised that that's not coming up as a portion of a presentation. So do you want us to just go into our thoughts on it now, or? Seems like we're in the middle of stormwater and all of that, but.
Yes, I think that is one of the discussions that we wanted to have tonight, just in terms of if your thoughts, based off of the information that was provided in the, in the memo, if that's as a topic that you want to explore further, that's one of the things that we wanted to hear more from you. So if you want to explore this further, discuss it further, get more information, that's certainly something that we can provide. That was one of the outcomes that we're hoping to have this evening is understanding what more information council would like to have and what further discussion you would like to have on that subject.
So I would like to know why, why our income threshold is set where it is. It seems to be higher than some of the surrounding cities, and I'd love to look over the information on maybe why our estimated participation rate is low. Certainly, it seems like that is because we're limiting it only to low-income senior customers, whereas many of the others also include low-income customers with disabilities and multifamily. So generally, I am in favor of more of those discounts, but I'd also like to understand what the potential costs are. It seemed like the. potential costs are. Because it seemed like the, the cost for our current program was fairly small. But if we have a small participation rate and it increases, I wonder what that, that would look like, and what the city administrative costs are if that was to increase.
Deputy Council President Batiste?
So, I would just like to ask at what time, it seems to me that we're, we're talking about this. This is something that I would like to talk about this evening as well. When we talk about the lower participation rates and that kind of thing, I think it's all the more critical that we speak about this on camera and talk about this program so people can understand. Did you say that there was someone from staff that could maybe just give a high level overview, and when would be the appropriate time? Should we go through the presentation and do that at the end?
Yes, that would, that would be ideal. This way, we can have an understanding of what the proposed rate increases would be for each of the utilities, walk through the rest of the presentation, and then discuss, have a discussion on those and the discount program, and answer some of your questions after we get through the stormwater utility. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Okay, so what I have up here on the screen, if you're ready, is the stormwater utility capital program that was adopted. This one is kind of in between the sewer and the water. 2020, there's about $800,000 worth of improvements. 21, 4.9 million. 22, $970,000 worth. And then, 23, 1.5 million. 24, 1.8 million. Major driver projects within those years, in 2020, you have major drivers. Really, it's pretty well balanced, but there's a couple of them that are setting up for major expenditures in 2021. Eastlake-Sam Parkway, West Ditch Conveyance, that project is to help reduce the flooding of Eastlake-Samamish Parkway. So, while the design is relatively low in cost in 2020, 2021 has a major capital expenditure. Similar to the Lower Issaquah Creek Stream and Riparian Enhancement Project, design work in 2020 continues a little bit, and then construction in 21 at about 1.3 million. One of the drivers that you see in here also is the Storm Drain Rehabilitation Improvement Program. We alternate years for design and then construction. So, you'll see one year being relatively low, 100, $140,000, something like that. And then, in between, you'll see costs on the order of about 7 to 850,000 dollars. Previously, those were just uniform costs across the years, but we realized it's more efficient and effective to do design work one year, and then come back and do construction the second year. We tend to be a little bit more efficient and effective in doing our work that way. And then, lastly, in 2020 and 2021, you'll see a reservoir overflow discharge improvements. And what that is, is those are improvements to the reservoirs, to allow the shop to maintain those reservoirs by draining them, inspecting them, cleaning them. And it'll allow them to drain it faster and still meet the NPDs requirements for discharge turbidity and things like that. So, there's a reason for those, so we meet the ecology permit when we drain the reservoirs, because we have to manage turbidity, as well, as well as we have to manage the chlorination that's in the system before we discharge.
Deputy Council President Batiste?
Sorry.
Oh, no. All right. Other questions right now?
So, same chart as the other utilities for stormwater. As Sheldon mentioned, it's a little bit in between sewer and water. We, like sewer, will keep the adopted rate adjustment of 3% in 2020, which adequately funds the utility. But then, over time, you can see some escalation of costs. We have creekside acquisition that hits O and M costs. There's also street sweeping, and then the cost allocation increases that we talked about before with the other utilities. So, that drives some of those impacts, as well as the capital plan is a little bit heavier than in sewer. See, we utilize reserves here. We are assuming a debt issuance to help pay for some of those capital improvements. And so, we have a bond reserve fund there, and we utilize capital reserves as well to fund some of those capital projects over time to, to smooth the rate Looking at the bill impacts to customers, we maintain the adopted rate adjustment in 2020, and that is about 50 cent a month impact. And then, over time, we have about 85 cents or 90 cents from 2021 through 24 per month. And again, those, the O and M impacts are the creekside property acquisition costs, street sweeping, and then some of the other cost allocations that have impacted that. And the capital projects are slightly higher than sewer at 2.2 million over the period. We also have a stormwater master plan going on currently, which is another cost that's hitting O and M as well. So, we're proposing 5% revenue adjustments from 21 to 24. And like the other utilities, we're proposing at this time, just across the board, maintaining proportionality between all customer classes, keeping the relationship the same, just adjusting the level of rates at the overall proposed level. Any questions on the rates or anything like that? My next slide is the local comparison combined for all utilities at 12 CCF bimonthly. And it's the same localities that we had before. And that is all I have for rates. If there's questions on storm or other utilities you need clarification?
Other questions from council? I don't think so.
So, now Judy is going to talk about general facility charges.
Good evening. I'm Judy Dean, and I'm from HGR Engineering. And I've done the general facility charge portion of the study. Have to bear with me, I'm used to having a mouse. I'm old school, so hopefully I can touch the arrows here. General facility charges are a one-time assessment to new customers or existing customers that are requesting additional capacity. The charge is based on the dollar value of the investment of your system at that point in time, plus any additional infrastructure that might be needed to bring that customer on the system. So, GFCs really are an investment of your system that's updated. It's kind of a rolling charge that gets updated every five years, hopefully, or whenever you have new information, like a capital improvement plan or a system plan. The GFC can be used for growth-related projects or growth-related capital. It's not a revenue generating source. It's a payback to existing customers, because they've paid for infrastructure to be made available when they came onto the system. The Washington State actually provides requirements, making sure that the fee is reasonable and attributable to the cost of the infrastructure. And how that is done is by using the city's specific land use information, capital improvement plans, and definitions of their existing level of service, both for water, sewer, and stormwater. There's different ways to value the, your investment of your system at that time. For the state of Washington in particular, they use original cost, and they'll allow 10 years of interest to be accumulated as part of that value of the system. Some of the other states within the United States, you can use replacement cost, you can adjust the cost for inflation. So, there's a little bit wider, not as much of a restriction like the Washington State has. So, these fees have been calculated based on the methodology that's provided within the Washington State law. The fee itself is, is really a simple calculation, and I like to show this, because I think it kind of tells a little bit better story. So, it's made of two components. The first component on the left is what we call our reimbursement component, or our buy-in component. And that's your existing plant divided by the amount of capacity that is available for that particular component of plant. So, total divided by the capacity of that particular component. Added to that is a growth component, and those are your future CIP projects that are growth-related. For example, you might have a facility that needs to be oversized, partly to meet growth at some point in future. That portion that was oversized to meet growth is allowed within the calculation, and is divided by that amount of growth for that oversized amount. You add both the existing and the future component, and that gives you the total maximum general facility charge that you can charge. And essentially, it's a dollar per customer of what your current investment of your system is. The equivalent resident units are based, again, on your, your planning information. I think it's really important, there's a couple of different ways you can look at your equivalent residential units. And for this study, we looked at land use planning. In other words, you know, the different areas, what the different components, what capacity were provided for each of those components. The future CIP was based on the recent system plan for water that was developed, and you'll see, when you look at the calculations, how that kind of jumps out. So, this is the initial results of the calculation. On the left-hand side is what your current general facility charge is. For water, it's 6,029 per ERU, which is equivalent residential unit. Sewer is based on residential customer equivalents, which is kind of, goes along with how Metro calculates the number of RCEs. And then, your stormwater is based on an equivalent service unit. So, in total, the present GFCs for water, sewer, and storm is $9,300. And that is based on a 2015-approved GFC. So, that was the last time they've actually gone through the full calculation. The next column is the calculated GFC, and you can see, it kind of tells a story of what we just went through when Sheldon was looking at the different CIP. The water changed quite a bit. It went up about $2,600, whereas the sewer and storm kind of went more of like an inflation route. If you, how do you go backwards? This one?
All right.
I wanted to go back to this, because if you look at, part of the reason that the water jumped up a little bit is, when you look at that existing plant value, South Cove, for example, was annexed on, their assets were donated. So, they're not included in the fee, but they're included as a customer. So, when the denominator increases, means you have more to divide by. So, the portion of the water GFC actually lowered a little bit on the existing portion, because now you had more customers to divide by. It's a payback of what existing customers have paid. So, that's why South Cove's assets bringing over were donated. That's not something that was actually paid by existing customers. So, that's not included, the fee. So, that's why you saw a little bit of a drop on the existing portion for water. On the right-hand side for water, it went up a little bit in the future because of the two projects, the water treatment and also the spa reservoir and booster station. And both of those projects were growth-related. In other words, only projects that you would do for a new customer to come on would be included in the GFC. You wouldn't include any projects that benefited existing customers. So, those projects in particular were divided by the capacity for that area, so that the existing customers have already paid for their infrastructure value, and it's to make sure that that gets recovered by those future customers causing that capital improvement. So, overall, that, you can see on sewer and storm, there wasn't any large capital improvement projects that were growth-related. So, basically, it was just looking at that 2015 value, existing value, investment value, and, you know, adding some interest and adding some, you know, projects that might have slight growth on it. Does everyone understand that? Kind of, so, this is, I've got a couple of charts that I'm going to go through, comparisons both for water, and then sewer, and then stormwater, and then one combined one. And it's important, this, these first three charts that are doing it separately for each utility are at the local level. And then, we'll show one at the end where it adds both the Cascade Water Alliance and the Metro general facility charge. So, for water, I think that most of these, I think two of them, I was thinking that Redmond just updated theirs. I've got these notes that are kind of down at the bottom. Issaquah right now, the 6,029, would jump up to the 8,600. And again, that's mostly because of those new growth-related projects. The Samamish Plateau shows 5342 for their GFC, but they also have an additional local component that depends on what area you're in. I was really conservative, because I think it starts out at 15,000 in addition to that. But it can go all the way up to, you know, $40,000, depending on what area you are. Redmond and Bellevue and Kirkland are all kind of within the same. And again, this is just the local components, does not include the Cascade Water Alliance regional. And then, Renton does not have a regional charge for them, but it's $4,400. So, in comparison, it does look a little bit higher than the other ones, but not as high as the Samamish Plateau currently. And Renton is, the 4,400 is 2020, they're updating theirs. And I was thinking there was one other one. It looks like just, just Renton. For sewer, the same thing, looks like the Issaquah is present to the calculator, just be about $100 increase. Again, the Samamish Plateau, on top of their 4144 facility charge, they add up, you know, more, at least more than $10,000 on top of it, depending on which area within, that you're building. And then, the Redmond, Bellevue, Kirkland, Renton are all within the same. And again, Renton is just raising theirs again to $3,400, a couple hundred dollars in 2020. For stormwater?
I'm sorry. Councilmember Walsh?
Can you go back?
Yep. Do that now.
I'm just chucked over the Samamish Plateau. Can you help me understand what a local facility charge is and why it would be so incredibly high?
I think Sheldon's going to take this one.
Sure, I can take that one. So, what the Samamish Plateau Water District does is, for their utilities that they provide, they have invested in extensions of their utility to different geographical areas. And what they do is they have a general facility charge for their general plant that provides for all of their utility area. But then, those specific regional areas, they actually have specific assessments called local facilities charges that they add on top of their general facilities charges for those subregional extensions. And that's what that is, the local facility charge. It's specific to that subregional area within their overall general service area.
So, it's still suggesting? So it's still suggesting that to create a new hookup to sewer or water, it's that expensive?
Yes. And that is a correct thing. I mean, I have heard from people that they're paying $30,000 to $40,000 for a hookup for water at times, depending on what area they're within.
And that has to be justified based on these calculations?
The district has justified the general facility charge, and then they have the local facility charge, which is kind of like a construction assessment for the work that they've done to extend the utility into a very specific area that only serves that area.
Okay.
Yeah, to further maybe clarify that too, is the initial general facility charge is kind of the backbone of the system, usually the supply, the treatment. And then addition to that might be distribution or pump stations. So I'm envisioning that core part of the Smamish Plateau is probably their main backbone infrastructure, but the way it's laid out, they have areas, you know, that are more specific, requiring more specific infrastructure in order to connect to the overall backbone structure. And I think that's where you're seeing that next jump in fees, depending how the land use and the infrastructure that they need to bring that customer on. And it's important to know that this, again, this is a payback to existing customers for facilities that they've already built for them, because these general facility charges don't come all at once. You kind of project over a time period that, for example, if you had a $100,000 plant that you put in to serve 10,000 customers, but you only had 8,000 right now, your charge would still be, that 100,000 divided by 10,000 would be $1,000 investment. But the 2,000 customers that aren't there yet might not come in five years or 10 years. So it's a way of, when they do finally come on, making sure that they are paying that original investment plus the investment of interest or other infrastructure that you've had to add since then. So that was stormwater. Pretty basic, it looks like Renton's got more of the higher, I guess, and that's based on an equivalent service unit. So Issaquah was just about a $200 increase in that general facility charge. Well, the big picture, that's a little scary, is the next slide. This is both local and regional water and sewer and stormwater charges. You can see in the light blue is the regional charge. Metro, I believe, is 10,000, around 10,000, that they allow the customer to pay over 10 years. I think Josiah said he just got his paid off. And the darker blue is the local charge. Oh, back up in that regional charge is the amount for Cascade Alliance, which is, I think, $6,700 in 2020. They also have just had an adjustment. So that $1,600 is the 10,000 metro and around the $6,000 for the Cascade Water Alliance. And then the local portion is the local general facility chart, and then again, in the Smamish Plateau, they also have by region. So Issaquah overall, around $25,000, bump it up to $29,000. And Smamish could be $52,000 or more when you include both the local and regional general facility charge. And then Redmond and Bellevue are all within the same amount, and then Renton doesn't have either the Cascade Water Alliance or the Metro Regional Charge. Was there any questions? Forgot to go back on one page when looking back at the overall charges. The recommendation would be at least to make an update or adjustment to the water GFC to bring that up in line with what the current investment is, given that those three main projects that are going on with the water treatment and the spa reservoir, since they are 100% growth-related projects. The sewer and stormwater could be adjusted as well. A lot of times, utilities will adjust every five years when they have new information, or they'll have what they call an adjustment, inflation adjustment, using the standard industry practice, the Engineering News Record. Construction Cost Index is something that's published every month, and a lot of times utilities will, every January, have an ordinance where they'll automatically update their GFC charges so that they will be in line with inflation each year to make sure that that investment amount is within what the utility should have. Any questions?
All right. That concludes the formal presentation.
Anything else?
All right. So other technical questions? Councilmember Ray?
So what's the, when we're calculating this, what are we using as a bonding period since we're going to do debt funding for a good portion of this?
Are you, is that for the general facility charges or for the rate side?
Both.
Okay.
And it really isn't either, it's neither, actually. The bonding period is actually for the capital improvement projects. And then, and then the follow-up question is, for the rates and the general facilities charges, what kind of numbers did you assume to come up with this five-year period? Because I'm assuming our bonding period is longer than the rate study period.
Right. And on the general facility charge side of it, we use the full, we look at, well, our general facility charge is a payback for amounts that the existing rate payers have. So once a person pays a general facility charge, they become a customer. It would be paying through rates, debt service, so you can't charge them through the general facility charge and through rates. So within that existing, that first part of that calculation, we actually subtract out any outstanding principal on bonds, the full outstanding principal, to make sure that we're not double counting. For, I think it was a 20-year bonds, 30-year bonds? 20-year bonds is what the full term was for the bonds that I was looking at. On the rate side, they just looked at the bonding period for the five-year timeframe that they were looking for, the revenue requirement.
So does that mean we would need to keep the rates high for the balance of that 20-year period too? Or escalate the rates during the 20-year period?
Usually, I think most of the payments are at a steady, steady pace, so once you bring your rates up to meet that debt service, it should be okay. The one thing you would have to look at would be the debt service coverage ratio, because that's what fluctuates with your O and M expenses. And part of one of the key things that, within that revenue requirement, including an amount from capital from rates that's set within your rate structure, actually helps your debt service coverage ratio, because they actually can include that part of it. So having a fixed amount annually to be included for capital improvement from rates helps that debt service coverage ratio stay steady.
Great, thank you.
Other technical questions? Hearing none. Before we go into council discussion, per my earlier instructions, I'm going to ask if any members of the pub, oh, sorry, Acting City Administrator Snyder.
Thank you, Council President. At this time, before we conclude our presentation, we just received the technical presentation on the rate study. I would also like to ask up to the microphone, the Office of Sustainability Director, David Fujimoto, to provide a summary of the discount programs that the city has available for those who are on lower fixed incomes.
I, it slipped my mind that we were going to do that, yes, indeed. Director, welcome. Good evening. Once again, David Fujimoto, Director of the Office of Sustainability. In your packet is a memo that was attached to the overall memo for the rate study results. And this talks more specifically about the low-income household utility assistance programs and some considerations for council. As a part of the rate study itself, these different options were not analyzed, and so this is really providing some information about the city's current program, some initial information about neighboring jurisdiction programs, and then some considerations for council, and some questions about kind of what kinds of things we might want to look at in the future. So briefly, as I mentioned, this looks at those different programs. Some policy considerations for council to think about are, should the city consider enhancements to its low-income household assistance program? If so, what populations and eligibility requirements should be considered? For example, we currently have a low-income senior discount, but it only applies to owner occupants. It doesn't apply to renters, doesn't apply to nonsenior populations, for example. Should the city consider some additional populations for that program? In what form should the enhancement take place or occur? There's a variety of methods for doing, providing some assistance to low-income households, which I'll cover briefly. The timing for exploration of those options, and then also, we know from experience with other utilities, that the administration of programs can have wide-ranging costs as well. So currently, as I mentioned, the city's current low-income utility discount program applies for owner-occupant senior households. They must be 62 years plus for at least one member of the household residing in the home. The income is set at 50% of the area median income, which is approximately $44,300 currently. And what else can I say about that? It's fairly straightforward. The program itself is administered through our finance department. We have a relatively stable number of participants in the program. Currently, there's about 52 households which are receiving the discount, and they also receive a discount of, the current program is 75% discount on their water and sewer bill, and they also are exempt from stormwater. Also similarly, just as a side note, we do have a similar program through our solid waste contract programs, so those same households receive 75% discount on their solid waste rates. And the way the contract is set up is it actually must mirror the city's utility discount. So if in the future that program were to change, the solid waste discount could also change. The other components that we also have are a little bit different. We, through our human services grants process, we have emergency financial assistance programs, and these are taking a little bit of a different flavor than ongoing rate assistance. These are really for emergent conditions where a household might not be able to meet their needs in a particular month or months, really designed for short-term emergency situations. There's some information in the memo that talks about the three agencies that we currently fund, which are Issaquah Community Services, Hope Link, and St. Vincent de Paul. They do provide utility assistance directly to households. We know from talking to those agencies that the demand for those services far outweighs the, or is far greater than the resources available to them. And I should also note that in the memo, there's some numbers about utility assistance, and those numbers reflect the total program services delivered to Issaquah residents. That's more than the amount that's funded directly by the city. So for example, Issaquah Community Services receives about $7,500 in grants from the city. Their total program budget is close to, I believe, $200,000. There is, I think, as one of, I think Councilmember Hunt mentioned, Cascade Water Alliance recently did a study, I think it came out earlier this year, with Texas A&amp;M, looking at affordability of the city, as well as Cascade members and a couple other utilities. And really interesting study, it looked at things from a slightly different affordability lens, but looked at cities' rates in comparison to hours at minimum wage, and then also a percent affordability relative to other kind of basic household costs. And so there's some information that's available there. It also provides a good survey of kind of programs in neighboring jurisdictions. It focused only on water and sewer, didn't include stormwater, so that's one consideration as well with that data. And some of that information shows that almost all utilities have some sort of low-income discount. Most often, they're a low-income discount for seniors or low-income senior households. Some include some other populations, such as individuals with disabilities, and fewer offer low-income discounts kind of across the board to all households. I think, as was noted before, yes?
David, a question, before you move off that Cascade study that's in your memo?
Yes.
There is a column on income threshold?
Yes.
I noticed at RIMC, it's based upon 50% of the median household income for one- or two-person household incomes. So when I look at this column here is, and we're at $44,300 per this, I assume that's the current median, 50% median.
That's correct.
So when I'm looking at numbers that are lower than that, is, should I interpret that, that are these other jurisdictions actually, do we know if they just have actual numbers? They probably have percents of median, and they probably just have lower percent requirements.
I believe that's the case, but I would need to verify that before I said for sure.
Okay.
So I think, I think the short answer is they have a different thresholds that they Let's see, so the other, I guess the piece I was pointing out earlier is that Issaquah, at least according to the study, has a relatively low participation rate. It's showing about 5.6%. Other utilities range anywhere from 7.8% up to 73.1%. So that is something that's important. We are looking at that right now and trying to find ways to enhance promotion of the program that we exist, that we currently have. The study itself talked about some things about visibility and access as being some considerations. How deeply is some of the content buried in some of the city's information or website? For example, the lack of translation into foreign languages is another barrier for a lot of populations. So there's some other considerations that could be taken, taken a look at with the existing program as well. And looking at utility assistance options, the memo lays out a few different considerations, both in terms of things like program administration, which I covered before, and customer benefit, overall program cost, a variety of different things. It can also be considered across the ways in which you implement it. So for example, it could be implemented, I think, as was referenced here tonight, in terms of rate design. So you're thinking about kind of that first cost of water for a household, the combination of both the fixed charge and that first increment of kind of basic indoor water use, kind of your drinking water, your bathing, your kind of basic needs that any household would need. Probably implementation through a rate structure is the cheapest, lowest administrative cost option. There's no income verification or anything else associated with it, but does require an overall look at the rate structure. There can be a variety of options for the utility assistance program that could be implemented. City could choose to enhance the existing program and consider other populations, whether those would be all low-income households or individuals with disabilities, changing the threshold requirements, there's a variety of things that could be considered. We also could take a look at the emergency financial assistance portion of the equation as well, and see if there were some ways the city could help to kind of fill some unmet needs in the community for those emergency situations. And then finally, there could be some more targeted conservation investments to help those households better manage their utility costs.
Deputy Council President Patisse.
Thank you for coming up and giving the presentation this evening. So I just am trying to understand, I understand that the senior citizen low-income discount program excludes renters. It also excludes duplex condominium and apartment dwelling units. So with the duplex and condominium, if there's an owner, would that still be excluded? Or is it referring to renters?
It's, so the duplex, the city has a different rate category for duplexes, since it does not apply to duplexes. If a condominium were individually metered as a single-family home, I believe it would apply.
Okay. And the other question that I had about the exclusion of rentals, I just wasn't sure, when we compare the cities, that information wasn't available. Do you have any idea if there are programs in neighboring cities that do include renters?
Single-family renters?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. We didn't have the time to assemble all that information, but that's certainly something we could take a look at.
Okay. Okay, okay. Thank you.
And I should note, the one piece of information I didn't mention was that Smash Water does have a different program. They do offer their program to low-income households, and so that is, while it's not the city's utility, it is some, it does include some residents in the community.
Again, Deputy Council President Bateese.
And I noticed, so with the emergency financial assistance program, that would be more expansive beyond the senior population and for emergencies, that, those numbers would be dependent on the grants that are given every two years, and so those numbers could fluctuate?
The assistance provided through the program, or the dollars?
The dollars.
The dollars could fluctuate, yes, depending on the granting cycle.
And so in this just snapshot that we have, we have HopeLink at zero. Does that just mean zero Isqwa residents were served just under that particular program?
I think, oh, thank you for pointing that out. So I think there was, the way that the data from HopeLink was aggregated, it didn't allow us to separate that information out. There actually should be a note to that. Thank you.
Other technical questions? Councilmember Winterstein.
Trying to do this in the form of a question, just looking at the IMC, I noticed there hasn't been a change to Chapter 13.92 since 1999. So I don't think any council has, or in staff, has taken a look at these policies in 20 years, so. My question to my, I guess my colleagues is, you know, would you join me in asking the administration to take, help us take another look at these programs? I think the participation rate and the exclusion of so many probably very needy households requires a look, a closer look and reconsideration.
Other technical questions? Acting City Administrator Snyder, any other material before we take public comment?
No, not at this time, thank you.
All right. Thank you for this presentation and this technical material. I will ask at this point if any members of the community wish to address us on the subject of the utility rate study results. I am going to offer a separate public comment when we get to the right point in the subsequent bill that I suspect some of you are here for regarding the Newport Way Right-of-Way dedication. That's going to be separate. Anybody wishing to speak on utility rate? And I see at least one person. If you want to come to the microphone.
So Connie Marsh, Nalipan Squaw. And I got an email about this utility rate. It sounded very positive. And what you all presented was not even close to the reality, in reality, to what the public was told. So let's see, it says, "The typical bimonthly residential water bill would be increased by less than $4 per month in 2020," right? But it neglected to look into the future and say, "But you might want to come look at the rest of the years, and then you might want to figure out how that all totals up into your budget over time." So when you put out a push like that, that is a push to keep people from coming and to keep people from engaging, because it sounds like it's not going to impact them. Now, the connection rates increasing a couple of thousand-plus, that might get some developers to come in. The conversation around our household was, "Well, what happens if we don't get those connection charges, yet we find that we are having to build these large capital facilities? And what is the risk that we are taking, and what are the consequences of that actions, and how will you solve those?" Because if growth slows and we're still building, then who's going to pay? Are you going to ask the rate payers to pay now because there's a deficit? And so that was one of those concerns that we had. And the other topic of conversation was, it is fascinating that we are putting in irrigation in a major park at the same time as we are talking about having to build large water facilities for growth. And the community also pays for the water that the Parks Department uses. So it would be very interesting to understand the water budget that our own city has, because we're paying for that too. And these increases also go toward that side of the bill. And that is nowhere in this particular, ever have I heard it discussed. So then the other thing is about stormwater. I went to the effort of looking at the capital improvement plan for some of the stormwater projects, and they indicate that they are looking for grant funding for several of those projects. Yet the numbers that we are seeing up here and that we, I think the rates are based on, are those projects with no grants. And so how do you decide if you're going to get grant funding? Are we looking for grant funding for some of our massive infrastructure improvements for water also? So where do we think reality is going to land? It seems like these rates are based on the maximum amount it's going to cost. The other capital improvement plan project was the improvements to Issaquah Creek downstream, which is like, woo-hoo, yee-haw, except for I swear that half of that is mitigation from Costco. Not the Costco, the Costco Road, the roundabout, because, so it's unclear to me, because we got, what, four or five parcels, and we were supposed to be offsetting some of the impacts from that road on those parcels. Yet it looks like we are trying to fund it through rates. And so some of this is confusing to me, because I don't think that our rate should be paying for mitigation for a road. So that is what I have to say about rates. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Mary Lynch, 2690 Northwest Oak Crest. I just want to ditto on what Connie said, and also say that most of the citizens don't understand the water bills. All they think it's water. And anytime you go out, you need to clearly explain what it all is covered, and that we also have the Cascade Water Alliance as partners, and that needs to be really clearly explained. The other thing, and I think with what Paul says, is I would like to see what the income and revenues are, because it seems to me that we're going to be growing. And at what rate are we growing, and where is the new development going to cover that? So as Connie mentioned, as far as the connection fees, I would like to clearly see that we have in the past with all this development, and going forward, that the new development pays its fair share. And in the past, what little I've been privy of seeing, development has not paid for their fair share and their impacts on the city when it comes to traffic and other, other services. And I think we need to make sure we change that and make that very transparent on what's happening with the growth. Just a comment on the senior rates, I didn't know we had one. I'm a senior. I've never seen it advertised. And I think that's one of the low uses. The other thing is implementation of that. Do you only have to do it once? Who checks it? Who qualifies it? Just because you signed a document doesn't mean that there are going to be people that are going to use and abuse the system. And then that impacts me, who's a senior, who isn't using it, partly because I didn't know it. But I think there needs to be a lot more transparency there. There's Nextdoor. That could go on Nextdoor tomorrow and get it out there. So there's all these avenues we have of getting it out there, but I think we need to look at the implementation of it, how we qualify people for that program, and making sure that we re-qualify. I know one senior in particular who has King County, has been getting discounted rates on her taxes, and she hasn't qualified in about 15 years, but she's still getting her senior discount on her taxes for low income. So I know King County doesn't do any follow-up, and I think the city should.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else this evening wishing to speak on this issue? No, all right. So with that, we'll move to discussion. Actually, I will ask Acting City Administrator Snyder what the administration is hoping to get from us in this discussion.
Thank you. So there are a couple of policy questions that you may have heard embedded in this multi-part presentation tonight. Some are related to the discount program, so the questions that David Fujimoto had raised in advance of his portion of this evening were, "Should the city consider enhancements to its discounts program? If so, then that may be something that we need to come back and have a more robust discussion to discuss. What are those enhancements that we should be examining? Does that include looking at the populations that are currently eligible for these discount programs? What the thresholds may be? What form the enhanced discount program may occur?" There are some options that he summarized. And then the timing of exploration of those options. I think we can employ, we can look into this and have a robust discussion as a 2020 work plan item, but it'd be helpful to understand what council's interest is, where you would like to see, where your priorities are, where you'd like to see this conversation going. So the discount program, I think, has a couple of policy questions that are related to it. And then we also are hoping to get a little bit of direction on the utility rates themselves. So as Robert York had said in the beginning of tonight's presentation on the rates, there are three options that the administration has put forth for council to move forward as next steps. So depending on council direction from there, you know, one thing that we may consider from what I'm hearing tonight is we may want to return back and have another discussion during our budget deliberations as we consider utility rates in more of a holistic and complete picture on what potential impacts to the households could be, and continue these discussions throughout the budget deliberations in October is when we would like to have more discussion on utility rates. And if that's, if that is the direction that council would go, I think we would just like discussion on what next steps you would like to see.
All right. Thank you for that teeing things up. With that, I will, Councilmember Wash.
Thank you. So just as an initial question on the discount program, if we decide that we want to have a more robust conversation, but decided that we had enough information on the updated rates, how would we go about that? Because I assume any change to a discount program would have to affect the rates.
So if that's something you wanted to explore further, we'd have to consider what those parameters are for the rate studies. We'd want to have a discussion about what are those potential options that we should put into a scope of work for further study in examining what the impacts on the rates may be. So that would be the proposal. We could engage with another consultant firm to complete the rate study according to the options that are available for, or that we've discussed for a discount program.
So could we potentially, could we potentially adopt utility rate changes and then change it based on any conversation, or would we have to wait?
Sheldon would like to answer this question, so I'll yield to him.
The answer to the question is yes. You could adopt these rates, and then once the other study is completed, then you would know the impact of the rates, and actually, that could be part of your decision-making as well. What are the impacts of the rates versus what the discount program would provide? And there's a number of variables in there, but yes, you could change the rates after the discount program is adopted, and you could do that together. But yes, you can adopt these now, and then later, say next, middle of next year, after a study is done for the discount programs, and the council says, "Yes, these are the discount programs we want," then based upon the calculations in that study, it would identify what the impacts are to rates, and then you would do the adjustment to the rates at the same time as implementing the programs. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Hunt.
So in answer to the first question about if we should consider enhancement, I think we should. I think it hasn't been thoroughly looked at in a long time, to Councilmember Winterstein's earlier point. And I think also that it's been known for a while now that we have this low participation rate. So I think it's a, you know, there's, and that participation rate is for eligible households. So there's the whole other question about people that may need assistance that aren't eligible, but then also amongst the eligible participants, we only have 5.6% participating, and there's known issues around communicating that this program exists. So a number of the ways that the existing program could be improved were mentioned already. One was, one additional one that's in Cascade Water Alliance is also just that right now, applications have to be dropped off in person or mailed. And so if we could have an online option or an email option, I think there's things we can do, sort of easy, relatively easy things, quick things that we could do to improve our existing program. And then I also think as part of a bigger conversation, we could also do enhancement. But I would like to look, I don't think we need a big study to know that there are some things we could do differently to improve our existing program. And then also, as far as the utility rates themselves, I think we have been provided with a lot of information, and I would like to look at it in the context of the budget, and we'll be considering a lot of trade-offs in the course of that budget discussion.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Following on Councilmember Hunt's comments about the low-income rates, I think the first thing that we can do is just publicize it. I mean, if I go to the website, I can't find it at all. So I think we just publicize it for one and let people know that it's available right now. I agree that, and I think it's implied in the fact that it was included in our packet, implied by the administration, that maybe we need to look at it again by just even including the information. So I would agree that maybe next year, we can, we can look at that. And I also would like to know in the context of the budget, what that would cost, so that we don't hear next spring that we'd like to do it, but we don't have the money and you didn't adopt it at the budget time. And if it's going to require staff time and have us consider trade-offs later, I'd like to do that now, not next year. And there has been, there have been a lot of questions by councilmembers, and there also, I thought, were some really good questions by a couple of members of the public that were raised tonight. And so I don't know that I'm ready to provide direction tonight, given that the questions that have been raised, that I would like answers to first. And so I would agree that we need at least one other meeting, and it's going to be at some point in the middle of budget deliberations, whether it's during a budget session or not. But I think we do need another session before we see an agenda vote.
Deputy Council President Bateese.
Thank you. So in regard to the utility rates, there, just to echo what Councilmember Goodman spoke about, there was a lot of information coming forward, and I think that there definitely need to look at all of that in the context of the budget and getting more information, because we're definitely having to look at, at trade-offs and understanding that. I would like to make sure that as we're communicating, that we're, that we're doing so in a, just a really logical fashion. Councilmember Goodman had some good comments earlier about these rates are going up, and here's why, for these reasons, and being able to be more clear about that, I think, is really important. I would, would really like to look at the discount program. That's something that hasn't been looked at in years, and there- That's something that hasn't been looked at in years, and there's a lot of different moving parts in terms of, I think it's great that we provide that. I think it's a shame that it hasn't been publicized enough for people to really know that it's out there. So we've already heard some comments tonight about there's some really easy things that we could do right off the bat, right away, and not even waiting until next year. But I would like to take a look at that, understand the costs and what those trade-offs would be, and would also really like to know more from neighboring cities about the different programs they've had, who they've included, the populations, more information on what's been effective. And just to know that, and obviously, this all comes within, you know, the budget confines that we, that we would have. So, thank you.
Councilmember Ray.
Just a couple of things. So when I do some quick math, channeling my inner Tola Marts, it works out over the life of this plan as a 32% increase adjusted for inflation in the cost of water. And I want to be able to answer the question of what am I getting for that additional 32%? Is it more reliable? Is it going to taste better? Is it going to be less filling? What's, what's the value proposition? I think that goes to Councilmember Goodman's comment of what are we, what are we buying for this? But I don't want to answer that question in terms of, we're putting a water treatment plant, or we're putting in a pumping station. I want to know what it is that I'm consuming as a member of the, of the community. What's going to be better about my water? What's going to be 32% better? When I, when I look at the rate increases, they just seem high, high to me. My, you know, my, my instinct says that seems awfully high, and I don't have enough information. I think this goes to Councilmember Winterstein's early comments on this. I don't have enough information to say, yeah, that makes sense, or no, that doesn't make sense. And I find that there's some inconsistencies in what we saw in the rate study around bonding, which has bonding in 2020 and 2022 versus what's in the CIP, which has the majority of the bonding for the water system plan coming in the, the out-years of the CIP. So I just need to have some more, I need more data before I can get behind supporting the rate increases. And then related to the senior or low-income discounts, I think that requires additional discussion, but I think it's a separate issue than the rates study, and I'd like us to separate them and deal with them independently.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. I recall about a year ago, or earlier this year perhaps, when we did, we adopted the rate water, the water study, not the rates, but the water study plan. And a back-of-the-napkin calculation at that time estimated, boy, you know, we could be looking at rates or some type of revenue requirement 50% above where we were today. That was a very back-of-the-napkin calculation. Sheldon, I think you may have offered up the numbers that I used to do that. Now we're seeing a proposal that is more closely tied to that spend plan, especially for those capital. So, and this is really just another way of saying what I said before. Now let's knit those together for me. We had a lot more detail about those expenses. I don't know that it's going to be taste-grater or whatever water afterwards, but for us to provide this utility, to provide a quality, reliable product, not just for consumption, but also for fire suppression and make sure that capabilities are there, there's a number of, it's beyond just the taste and the quality that goes into the expenses related to water, stormwater and sewer. What are, and so in this additional information, like a budget, here's my expenses, here's my plans, and, and here's how I'm going to pay for them. I, I think I do agree that some narrative or explanation of, of the full service that we're providing should accompany that. Thank you. One last comment. Yes. I meant to say, we have an opportunity to use this new format of study sessions to simply say, and can you do, come back in two weeks and update us? That's for your consideration.
Got it. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. So just adding my point of, yes, I absolutely think that we need to take a look at the discount program in a larger scope, but I would love to see it featured in the email, put on the website. It's a little bit buried in the utility section, put on Nextdoor, things that we can do in the meantime. Similarly, on communication, I have to say, I agree with Connie in the way that the notice over the ISQA Insider came out about the utility rates and the update that was going to come. I was like, oh, this is going to be an easy night talking and everything. And then I look over our packet, and I'm like, wow, that really doesn't jive. So I was a bit disappointed on that scope. And then I will also chime in that I would like to see more of the expense information, and particularly, I know I had asked previously for how the cost allocation is coming through, because I know that's going to be a portion of our budget that we need to look at. And so if we're going to shift money and see an increase here, I need to know how much of that increases capital versus the other areas.
So in terms of the discount program, I agree that it should be a separate discussion. It sounds like you've heard a lot of council interest in figuring out how to make this information more available. I think I heard there was some interest in looking at who's covered and where. You know, I have a particular interest for low-income seniors because they are so often on a fixed income in a community where costs are going up so high. Not that other folks that are low-income don't also have a tough situation, but seniors oftentimes have fewer levers to address that. So I, I view in this one that there are, you know, I'm okay with the idea that there might be separate city additional resources available for low-income seniors versus the general low-income members of our community. On rates and further discussion, yes. I don't know about coming back in two weeks, because I know two weeks isn't really two weeks for you guys, because by the time you put a packet together, it's faster, or the time goes by faster. But clearly, you've heard around expenditures and from numerous councilmembers, additional information they need to get their arms around this issue. I do think it'd be best to have discussion, further discussion before we get to budget. I think it's a big enough topic. Another round here in this format, whether it's two weeks, or four weeks, or six weeks, or whatever, I think is probably needed before we get to budget. You know, it's obviously water versus everything else, right? Everything else, our rates, like we've seen in the past, the kinds of increases we've seen in the past, and water doesn't look anything like what we typically try to put for our community. I've asked about this, you know, the history of real dollars per capita, or real, sorry, real dollars per resident. If that tells us that we've just been remiss in doing this for a while, and we're playing catch-up, that's one thing, but I'm eager to see what those numbers say. You know, this is, in some senses, a little heartbreaking. 10 years ago, when I started on council, I thought we had the best water around. And then we find this PFOS, and it's unfortunate to me, you know, however it happened, you know, PFOS was a thing that kind of fell on our community, and we're having to pay, and our residents are having to pay huge amounts of money to make us whole again, to bring us back to the water that we need as a community. I just feel like, wow, there isn't some way that insurance or something helps to cover this, because it wasn't through any, it wasn't like we mismanaged our water, or we made bad strategic decisions. You know, something happened over the last 25 years, and somebody put something in the ground that, that, you know, just results in this massive cost to us as a, as a city. And, you know, dealing with the ramifications of this are just, it's, it's very sad to me. So those are my thoughts. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Comments on PFOS and the massive cost? Can we get some, can that be clarified, Sheldon? I'm not sure that rates we're looking at increasing are, I mean, if we're looking at a treatment plant, wasn't the treatment plant in the plants long before PFOS, and it has to do with growth?
The primary reason for the treatment plant is to manage the water quality in all four wells at one location, so that we can match the regional water quality as we need to bring regional water into the system. The PFOS will be one component of the treatment train, but that's not the primary driver for the treatment plant. It's the inefficiencies and the difficulties in managing four different water qualities in four different wells, which we've been dancing around for a number of years operationally. So it's, it's intended to actually create long-term efficiencies in the utility. Yes, there's an upfront capital expenditure associated with it, but over the long term, it should be more efficient operationally to address those water qualities that way. There's many different water quality issues in the four different wells.
Other questions and comments? Acting City Administrator Snyder.
Thank you. I'd just like to take the moment to get a little clarity for myself, making sure that I heard something correctly earlier in the presentation. So if I could ask you to add onto your answer and elaborate, I thought that I heard in the presentation earlier, as we were going over some of the cost drivers, that the filtration system that the city has already installed was one of the cost drivers that were included in the rate study.
Thank you. Yes, that was one of the drivers, but that is a cost that was expended, that was an unplanned expenditure that we've embedded into the rates, and then over the five-year period, we would recover that money. But the treatment plan itself, that large capital expenditure, I was trying to kind of separate the two. But yes, PFOS is one of the drivers. Thank you, Andrea.
Other, Councilmember Goodman?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Anything else before we move on? Going once, going twice? Acting City Administrator Snyder.
Thank you very much. So I just want to be clear on the direction that we've received from council this evening. So what I heard was, yes, we, the council would like to examine the discount program and potential enhancements or expansions to that. That I heard a majority say that that can be a separate discussion from the rates, but that certainly in the interim, we need to be providing outreach and seeing how to ensure that those who are eligible have knowledge and awareness of the program, and perhaps remove some of those barriers to accessing the program and taking advantage of it in the interim. I also heard from council a desire for us to, for the administration to return to council for another discussion, providing the information that you requested, and there's a number of those pieces of information, including looking at it from a budgetary perspective, what are more information on expenditures and operating expenses. And so I would anticipate that the administration can return for that presentation and discussion sometime in October, maybe early October. By that point, the budget will have been transmitted, as we're planning on that happening on September 24th. But it also may be good to have that conversation while we're discussing the utility fund in general, and looking at it from a greater context. So, so I think we will be prepared to come back to council and have a discussion about that with the information compiled. I've heard that interest from council to do that instead of immediately try to craft an agenda bill for your consideration. Okay. Okay. I'm checking with council to make sure that that's the direction that I received from majority of council. I'm seeing a lot of head nods, so we'll proceed with that plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, staff, for that, you know, it's, it's telling how important the subject was. We thought we were going to cover this in an hour. And with that, we will move on to ID 0528 Newport Way right-of-way dedication, Burisma Portion, and Sheldon gets to be point person on this as well. Hey, Sheldon. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. There's been a request for us to take a five-minute break, so we will, we will be back in five minutes. Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're back. Bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, ready for round two. ID 0528 Newport Way right-of-way dedication. Sheldon Lynn, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Councilmember Martsch, for that introduction. So this item is about the consideration to dedicate a portion of the Bergsma property that was recently acquired by the city as right-of-way to the city's Newport Way corridor project. I've already been introduced, but should I need to call a friend or phone a friend, I have Jeff Watling, the Parks Director, here in the audience in case there's questions for Parks. In this item tonight, the city is, the administration is requesting direction from the council on a proposed dedication of a 10-feet-wide strip of land from the Bergsma parcels for right-of-way for the Newport Way 54th SR 900 road project. As a reminder, the conversation tonight is not about the type of improvements that may or may not be on the southerly side of Newport Way. It's about the dedication of the right-of-way. The council has already made a decision on the corridor concept back in December of 2017. As part of this presentation, I'll give a brief background. I'll describe the property for consideration, and I'll provide some options for consideration for the discussion. This map shows the location of the Newport Way corridor project in red, and it shows the property that was acquired, which was Bergsma, in 2019. As way of background and history here, in 2016 and 2017, the city embarked and engaged the community along the corridor to define what the roadway corridor concept would look like. In 2017, the city council adopted a corridor concept for moving forward with design. That concept generally incorporated two travel lanes, two bike lanes, a multipurpose trail on the northerly side of the road, and a five-foot sidewalk on the southerly side of the road. There was landscaping and medians in there as well, but those were the basic mobility elements that were adopted. In 2018, following the adoption of the corridor concept, two things were happening. The engineering department was moving forward with the design of the roadway improvements to a level of 60%. To accommodate concerns about tree retention that we had heard from the community and the like, the project design at 60% included hillside retaining walls that were quite large along the southerly border of the project, specifically along the Bergsma property as well as the King County property, just to the northwest of the Bergsma land. In addition to that, the city was actively pursuing opportunities to fund the acquisition of the Bergsma properties. Grant applications for that funding and discussions with grant agencies anticipated at that time that there would be a dedication of 10 feet of right-of-way strip of land to the road project as previously planned when there was a proposed development on the property. Fast forward to 2019. 2019, the project had a value engineering study performed on it. In addition to that, the city actually acquired the Bergsma property. The Bergsma property, in summary, is 33 acres, and it was acquired in January of 19. Again, as a reminder, the grant applications and the appraised value for that purchase all incorporated the concept that 10 feet of land, strip of land, would be dedicated to the roadway for right-of-way. This graphic just shows in general where the 10-foot strip of land would be. Ms. Goodman?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Goodman.
How long is the red line? You know?
How long is it? I don't have that number exactly.
Okay.
I can get that answer for you. So the red line basically indicates the location of the 10-feet-wide strip of land. This is just a graphic that's meant to show the location of it. It doesn't show the dimensions because the scale is such that it wouldn't show up. In the value engineering study that I mentioned earlier, the value engineering study recommended opportunities to reduce costs by primarily reducing the size of the retaining walls that were along the southerly edge. To do that, the value engineering study recommended that we eliminate both the sidewalk and the landscaping along that southerly edge to reduce those heights. But in doing so, it still wasn't clear how much right-of-way we would need. It was still an unknown because there's other pieces of infrastructure, streetlights, fire hydrants, other things that may be required to go behind the curb that may still also require right-of-way. That was an unknown. So we were beginning at this point, you know, with an anticipation of we needed 10 feet. The VE study recommended that we reduce that to reduce the heights of the walls. So this graphic was just meant to show, you know, what the value engineering study was recommending in a generic sense. The options that the council has in front of it tonight are to dedicate the 10-feet-wide strip of right-of-way now, which is the recommendation, or do not dedicate the 10-feet-wide strip of right-of-way now. When considering the options for council to consider, the following items were considered in here. The adopted corridor concept, the flexibility to achieve the adopted corridor concept and make a decision later between when the park trail and use planning and observations of the use of the corridor are completed.
Councilmember Hunt?
And also Councilmember Winterstein. So I have a question on these options.
Yes.
It seems to me that we're in a work session, so I just wanted to clarify that we are not, you know, options, we aren't doing either of these things. We're going to be, it seems to me that we're going to be discussing, but we wouldn't take action to dedicate the right-of-way now.
That's correct. I guess the word "now," I should clarify that. Thank you. The word "now" means before we receive the grants from the county that would require covenants and restrictions to be placed upon the land. And that's actually a good cue for me because I've missed a major point here that I need to bring out. And I believe that'll come out here as I talk about the factors that we were considering for the different options. But you're right, the "now" would be probably in October would be the action, if council were to take the action.
Right, right. So I think, just to clarify, that it's not only, not only not now, but it's also that we're in a work session, so we wouldn't take action.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, this is another one where, just like the last ID item, the administration is sort of looking for general feedback from us in preparing a future action, or a future agenda bill.
That's right. And I just wanted to clarify because the options, to me, do not read like that. The options read more like an agenda bill options.
Thank you.
And I went ahead and looked up the answer to Councilmember Goodman's question. It's about 1,400 feet.
Thank you, Mr. Martsch.
Certainly.
So...
Oh, and sorry, Councilmember Winterstein has been waiting patiently.
Maybe I'm going to get my answer here in a moment from Sheldon. We own the land, but somehow we have to dedicate part of it, and I wondered if you could explain the technicality of what we're doing here, because we own the land.
Yes, I will. I think that comes in the next consideration that the administration was doing as it was moving forward with this, is that the land is owned as real property for the city. This is a federally funded project. And so as part of those types of projects, they're required, the city is required to certify right-of-way. Not certify that it owns the land, has to certify that it's right-of-way. So a dedication of right-of-way would be needed by, to see that we actually have the right-of-way to build the project. We'd have to have either right-of-way or permanent easement for public right-of-way to satisfy Wash dot FHWA. So that actually brings me to the consideration of future property restrictions and the reason for bringing this forward now. When the receipt of the Conservation Futures Grant occurs for the Bergsma property acquisition, the property will be constrained with covenants that if the right-of-way is required in the future, the city's project costs will increase as a result of needing to mitigate additional covenants, and will also have to address federal NEPA and 4F issues. 4F is a code of federal regulations rule under NEPA that protects the use of park property. And so FHWA and Wash dot would have to approve of the use of the parkland if we were to acquire it as part of right-of-way. So it becomes a higher burden on the project, which increases costs. And then the covenants would actually require us to pay more for the property because we would also have to pay to replace the property, not just pay for the property. So, and I'm not as familiar with the details on that as Jeff Watling might be, so if there's a question on that, I'm going to phone a friend. But I'm going to continue here until questions arise. I spoke about the complexities and costs relating to the acquisition of the right-of-way in the future. And then the other is impacts to the plan if the right-of-way is not dedicated. That's the corridor concept plan that is. The other factor is if it's dedicated now, the city would avoid those additional costs and complexities in the process of NEPA. And if it turns out that all or part of the dedication was not needed, the city council could then vacate the right-of-way back to parks. I have a slide following this that'll show how that could work. So I spoke about the flexibility and the ability for council to make a decision later and vacate the property back to parks if the right-of-way is not needed, or any portion of the right-of-way is not needed. And so here we are, September, October 2019. We're having this conversation of, to get direction from the council regarding whether or not to dedicate the right-of-way. Between now and roughly about a year in front of construction, there's going to be several years of time that are going to pass because, you know, we still have to figure out our funding issues and other things that go along with it. In the meantime, the Parks Department's going to do some planning for its trails and how that property is going to be used at the end of the day, and how that use will relate back to the roadway and the improvements that may be needed. In addition to that, we'll monitor the use of that corridor as things have changed along the corridor with a brand-new precipice trailhead that the county is going to build, development that's obviously occurring today, as well as existing residents and how they use that corridor. And so based upon that information, about a year in front of when the project goes to construction, the council can have another touch and decide at that point, do we want to shrink the right-of-way down and eliminate some facilities, or do we want to stay with the currently adopted concept plan? At that point, it's not hard to remove something, but without the right-of-way, it precludes having it unless additional costs and complexities in the project are tackled. So with that, I guess the recommendation would be that the council dedicate the 10-foot-wide strip of right-of-way, not at this meeting, but at a future meeting, at a regular council meeting, under an agenda bill. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Goodman?
Sheldon, I just have a couple of questions. Maybe it's... What's the, if we were going to reserve right-of-way, what's the drop deadline for that before we get into having to concern ourselves with other agencies?
The deadline for that would be prior to acceptance of the grant that the county has told us we are going to get for the Bergsma property, because that grant is what's going to basically put the covenants and restrictions on the property. And I think that's scheduled for first part of November. I'm going to phone a friend on that one.
Jeff Watling, Parks and Recreation Director. Yeah, just to clarify, we, King County Conservation Futures Committee has recommended funding for this project. That is going through the county council approval process right now. Anticipated, what we've heard from county staff is grant awards would be potentially available November, December of this year at the earliest.
Is there a process? I mean, a grant award doesn't mean that everything's all done.
Right. So as we've done with other grants, we would bring back before you as council the agreement, the Conservation Futures agreement, to accept that grant award. And then, again, funding becomes available. Once we receive that funding, we are also in that agreement that would be coming before you as council. We would be accepting with these funds... We would be accepting with these funds comes this condition, this covenant, that would be placed on the property.
Okay. Um...
No, please, continue.
And then the other question I have, next question's for Sheldon. I'm looking back at April 15 when we had the information on the value engineering, and it says that prepare 90% design end of 2019.
Yes.
Can you give me an update on that schedule?
We are currently still moving forward towards that 90% design. And as the information item presented in April, the 90% design does not include the landscaping on the southerly side, but it does include the sidewalk. Again, the request for the 10 feet is to allow the council full decision-making and flexibility on the corridor concept in that, you know, the landscaping, while it's currently not being put in the design, the 10-foot right-of-way would allow us to put it in the design should council make that decision later. Because council did not make a decision to change the corridor concept. So we want to maintain flexibility for the entire corridor concept.
Other than a sidewalk, what might go in there?
You could have streetlights, fire hydrants, utility underground corridors, maybe there's some overhead work. There's a number of differences, primarily utilities though.
Okay. And then, just for anybody who's interested, the reason I asked how long it is because I was just trying to figure out what the area is. And so if it's 1,400 feet times 10 feet, that's...
14,000 feet.
Yeah, it's a third of an acre total.
Yeah.
I like to have facts in front of me.
Sorry. I meant to do that calculation and forgot to.
Councilmember Ray?
So, kind of interesting that our timeline's being driven by the award of the grant. And so it makes me kind of contemplate the Conservation Futures Grant. And does King County know that we're contemplating this right-of-way?
Yes. So, yes, yes, they do.
And so?
Yeah, so we, in fact, if you don't mind, I'll go back even farther. So knowing that this road project was a priority and has been a priority for years, even as we were exploring potential acquisition of the Bergsma property, and as that became enough of a potential that we put together an appraisal, we made sure that appraisal, when we were valuing the property, assumed a right-of-way dedication was going to happen for the need of that Newport Way project. So as we determined that value, negotiated a sale that had that assumed dedication. Then in turn, as we applied for King County Conservation Futures Grant, within the application, as we've talked with staff, we've let them know that it is anticipated that a right-of-way dedication would be happening for this Newport Way project.
Or could be happening.
Or could be happening.
So would it, would it be possible to, within the grant award, to carve out an exemption for this right-of-way, so we don't need to dedicate the land today, but could carve out an exemption for this third of an acre, so that it would not, it would not be covered by the covenants of the rest of the grant?
Takes two parties to confirm that, so we would, certainly could be something we would explore with the county and see if that is, they accept writing something into the agreement as such.
It has the same net effect, right? Except it gives us more time to contemplate.
It could. We would also, knowing next year we're going to be applying for what looks like probably two or three state RCO grants, would want to be doing that same thing because mostly those, likely those grants that we're seeking would also have similar requirements of a covenant placed on them.
I'm just, I'm just mulling over the notion that we have the same net effect, which is to say, we're taking a third of an acre out of this parcel of land that we have set aside. And one way is we're saying we're going to set it aside, you know, we're going to do it ahead of time and we're going to set it aside as right-of-way, so it's off the table when we sign the grant. Or part B is we say we're going to exempt, or negotiate an exemption for that third of an acre from the covenants in the grants that we secure. So then it has the same net effect.
If I may?
Please.
Yes, it may have the same net effect in dealing with dedicating it in relationship to having the covenants and restrictions on it and us having to address that during the design and right-of-way acquisition. During the right-of-way acquisition and the NEPA process, however, the city would still have to address the park property, because it remains park property, through the 4F process. And then, once that process is complete during the right-of-way phase, the city's road project would have to pay for that land, based upon appraisal value of that land. And so it is still an additional cost to the road project, just not as great, because it doesn't carry those covenants and restrictions on it. But, so, yes, in part, it's the same, but no, it's not completely the same.
And it's funny, because my next question was around the federal funding part of it. But the next question then is, when are we, when would we be doing that? When would the timeframe for that be?
Currently, the NEPA process and so forth would probably be towards the tail end of the, this year or next year, once we reach the 90% design mark. The right-of-way acquisition is one of the currently discussed unfunded projects that would be subject to a vote.
And then, final question is, are we in the process of acquiring right-of-way from King County for the land that they own that's frontage to Newport?
Yes, we are.
Councilmember Hunt?
In the value engineering study, it looks to me like there was a two-foot landscape buffer needed for light posts and things like that. I can't, not totally sure, but that's what's on the, that's what's in the proposed road section. And so I wondered if you could talk about that and if we could, what, what all could go in a two-foot buffer rather than a 10-foot buffer?
The dimensions of the buffer are roughly two to three feet for that. And that was behind the sidewalk, between the wall and the sidewalk, if I remember correctly.
So the, okay, so I'm referring to the April 15 meeting, and there's a, there's a landscape buffer, and then it's pavement. So then there's bike lane, travel lane, et cetera. That was the value engineering.
So, the complicating factor is, is that in the two-dimensional world of the roadway versus right-of-way, where those improvements sit, we don't know how far back from the edge of right-of-way that two-foot buffer would exist. So you have a current right-of-way limit, but then you have certain roadway prism improvements that are from the back of curve to the north side of the roadway. Where the back of curve exists related to the right-of-way line, we don't know that exact dimension yet. We're close, but again, we're looking at this from a perspective of, the council adopted a corridor concept plan that incorporated not just the improvements from the back of curve north, but it also incorporated improvements on the southerly side that were for mobility reasons and buffer between the sidewalk and the motoring public, the sidewalk and the landscape. And so, this is about keeping flexibility in front of council and the ability to choose at a later date based upon observations and park planning, what is the best thing to do along that southerly edge.
Councilmember Goodman?
Vicky and I are currently looking at the same photo, or the same rendering in the, in that April 15 presentation. So, it says that, in the rendering that councilmember Hunt is talking about and I'm looking at, it says, minimum 51 feet shows as what would be needed for the road, the improvements. It says that the existing right-of-way is 60 feet. So, the, it almost, I don't know, but it looks as though we're not utilizing nine feet in the corridor concept, and that now we're looking for 10 more. So, I'm probably wrong, so excuse me.
So, no, no, I, I hear what you're saying. And so, yes, the right-of-way is 60 feet currently. And without the improvements behind the sidewalk, I think, you're right, it's like 51 feet of need. But depending on where that roadway horizontally fits within the right-of-way, you may need to go more to one side or the other so that you maintain your proper geometry and other things like avoiding wetlands and steep slopes on the other side, which are adjacent to the creek systems and other wetlands. And so it's a balance of what your impacts are and where, and how you want, how you can build the road. So it's not necessarily that the road perfectly fits in the center of any right-of-way. You're trying to engineer it to minimize your impacts and balance the engineering requirements as well. Does that help you understand?
Maybe not. And when do you think 90% is going to be done, 90% design?
It should be done by the end of this year. That's the plan.
Thanks.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Sheldon, that actually helped me quite a bit. This idea that we have a 60-foot corridor and it's kind of like you can, you're going to build some type of, you're going to make some type of improvement with sidewalks, buffers, lane, travel lanes, and you get to fit that within that 60 feet. We may only need 51 to 53 feet based upon value engineering, but the idea is that you get, you have 60 feet in which to fit it. So that, so that, I think that's very helpful for me. We did not, you've said it many times, and I agree, that there was a concept plan that we adopted, but we didn't, we were not asked to, I believe, and more made any formal comments about the alternative design concept, which eliminated the retaining wall, or, well, it says remove retaining wall, but I don't know that it completely removed that. Certainly shrunk it, but eliminating, I think it did remove a sidewalk and a planar along the southern frontage of Newport Way. I'm also looking at, you know...
That was, that was the recommendation.
That was the recommendation. But I don't think we took formal action on that, correct?
That's correct.
So, so I'm going to make an assumption that I want to, based upon comments we've heard over, actually, not just recently, but even in the more, in the past, since this value engineering study came out, I've come around to believe, you know, I think that adjustment is the right thing to do because of, I mean, it's not an easy thing. I know that the, the, having good options, viable, maybe non-motorized transportation on either side of the roadway, I understand the attractiveness to this. But as you said yourself, we have steep slopes and perhaps sensitive lands on both edges of this right-of-way. And if we can achieve our mobility and our safety and other goals in using less of the footprint, we should try to do that. Now, we, so we haven't been formally asked to adopt a program like that. We haven't been formally asked to do that. But I'm in favor of that idea. And, and if we, if that were ever to be formally adopted, and so this is kind of a hypothetical, I know you're asking us for 10 feet into the Bergsma property as an insurance policy, as much as anything, so that when you finally figure out what's the best balance, because a cut on the south side might preserve a steep slope or a wetland or a sensitive area on the north side, or we might decide to preserve a steep slope on the south side and may have to do some mitigation to something on the north side. I think that's what you're saying. But if we were really looking at a cross-section that was only 51 feet, would we, would we be, or 51 to 53, it says in this slide from the April that it's the minimum 51, if you look, add up the numbers, it could be 53, so 51 to 53 feet. Would we still be looking for 10 feet?
You'd probably be looking for something less than 10 feet, but how much less, I don't know. You may be looking for two to three feet. But, I don't know, and that's the one thing that, you know, the...
So, so I understand that. I'm going to, I'm going to stop you there, apologize. Okay, okay. So we, we don't know, the, as you continue towards completing the design, if there is a 10-foot right-of-way on that property, just because it's there, will we move into it and use all 10 feet some places, potentially, versus if, you know, you really don't have that 10 feet, you really only have three feet? Do you think we could still engineer the right solution?
We're striving to engineer the lowest-cost solution, which would be minimizing any impact of that hillside. I mean, and, you know, part of the factors in it is the decision-making and flexibility based upon the park planning and trail use planning of the property, the Bergsma property, and how it relates to the roadway, and then how that corridor is used. If we have time to evaluate it, we can design, like we're doing right now, go to 90%, so that we can then, you know, hopefully apply for grants and things like that and be more successful because we're getting closer. But the ability for the council later, once it has new information, to say, yeah, you're right, Mr. Winterstein, let's just eliminate both the landscaping and the sidewalk on that side. Great, you adjust the design at that point. It's easy to adjust that rather than coming back and asking for the right-of-way at that time. Because there may be other factors that come into play later with that corridor. We don't know. Let's say that the Bergsma property wants to have multiple trail connections down to the roadway.
Well, you're actually getting, getting to my...
I mean, it's, we don't, we don't, we don't know. And so that's, that's the reason why the administration's recommending flexibility. At the end of the day, the process, once the decision is finally made, when all the other information inputs is given, then it's an easy process to vacate it back. And once you vacate it back, the vacated area goes to the property and it, and it goes under the same covenants and restrictions that the remaining property has.
Okay. And all I would, I would urge that, you're doing this comprehensive planning and design, and like, a key stakeholder from a related department is sitting right next to you and kind of, what they might be thinking about would be a really good idea to include that in your, in your planning and thinking as well. And, and, but I realize that's getting ahead of ourselves. That hasn't taken, there's no details of that's been looked at. Sheldon, all I'm really getting at is that the, to set aside 10 feet now, you're saying about, I hear what you're saying, maximum flexibility, but what's the, if I'm looking at an alternative concept that says we won't need as much right-of-way, again, 51 to 53 feet instead of the original plan, which required 63 feet, right? Now our concept through there is even 10 feet less. So I'm, it's, it's kind of like, if we didn't have the full 10 feet and we still try to fit 53 feet in there, into the, a design into that, then I guess we're saying we're just going to have to impact the sensitive lands or the steep slopes around the north side to preserve the steep slope or sensitive lands that are on the south side. Is that, I'm trying to...
Engineering-wise, it depends on where that 51 or 52 feet fit within the right-of-way and how it horizontally moves through it. You may have some impact on both sides, because we have to maintain certain horizontal curves and the horizontal and vertical profiles. There are a number of things we have to do, engineering-wise, to ensure we're designing a safe facility. I can't guarantee that just because you take 10 feet off the 62 feet or 63 feet, that I don't need 10 feet of right-of-way on that side. I don't need 10 feet of right-of-way on that side. Because I don't believe the roadway is dead center in the middle of the right-of-way today.
Yeah, I hear that, okay, all right. I'm not exactly sure what I'm asking for here, other than, conceptually, we have a design that's been proffered that may be more amenable to what we want because it can minimize the impacts. So, why we would be trying to set aside such a large section of the land when we've already reduced the demand for it? That's what I'm trying to understand. But I know that if we dedicated less, and it was a certain section that said, okay, you know, we're just going to have to do something about the steep slope or the sensitive land that's on the north side. If we had a 10-foot, then we would maybe be able to preserve that, and maybe there's something we would, that the line would be somewhere on the south side, and it would have a net less effect than doing some, harming something on the north side. I don't know if you're following all that. I'm trying to understand, I don't understand all this.
Sounds like we're starting to deliberate.
Well, so, I'm trying to understand if 10-foot is really something we need to set aside.
Okay. Could you summarize in two paragraphs the argument as to why you believe we need to set this 10 feet aside?
Setting aside 10 feet of right-of-way prior to receiving the grant minimizes the costs and complexities in moving forward with the road project, for certain. It provides the maximum flexibility for the city council and the community to decide what those ultimate improvements will look like. That would maybe be consistent with the currently adopted concept or some reduced portion. And those are probably the two main reasons right there. Flexibility, I think, is very important for the community to decide. There was a lot of community input on that corridor concept to begin with. And that would be the two that I would put forth.
That was a couple of paragraphs, all right? Thank you very much. Other questions? Because when we're done with technical questions, I want to go to public comment, and then we can deliberate on this issue. And again, we're not deciding tonight, but we're giving some feedback to the administration towards an eventual agenda bill. Any other technical questions? No? All right, so I will ask if anyone, oh, look, there we go. At least one member of the community here this evening wishes to provide comment on And I do want to thank you. We are over three hours in at this point, so your enthusiasm is noted.
Okay, we got a 60-foot road right now, 60-foot of right-of-way. We got travel lanes, we got the Mountain Sound Greenway Trail, got some light poles, we got signs, we got utilities, both below ground and above ground. We have some, we have a hillside as well. When you, there's recent stakes are in for the survey that's been done on the property, and you can see that the 60-foot is up on the hill ways, and we only know a few places where those stakes are because they're at the corners of those bigger parcels. But, so, we already are up into the hillside a certain amount. The sidewalk has been a sore point, for sure, for many of us. It's still in the plans, even though at the open house, we were very definite about it not needed. I think the sidewalk is very unsafe, actually, on that side. It's up against, you're going to be up against retaining walls in many cases. You're going to have, right next to a bike lane. Bikes, it's a whole different world on bikes. With electric bikes, those bikes are going to be traveling in those bike lanes just about the same speed the cars are. The recreational bikers, hopefully, are going to be in the Mountain Sound Trail going slow, and we can regulate trails' speeds. You're not going to regulate electric bikes in bike lanes, other than what the car speed is. We're talking about a very, very long piece of sidewalk that would go from the county's park, almost, well, it would have to go all the way to 900. But a big part of it would be in the middle of the Burisma property, where the Burisma property is very steep, and you wouldn't be going up. But you're talking about hundreds and hundreds of feet between crosswalks for somebody on that six-foot or five-foot sidewalk against a hillside. And I don't know why they would want to be there. Over on the Mountain Sound Trail, you've got the views down to the creek, and you have a look at mostly will be a wooded hillside. It's going to be a lot different being over on that trail at the bottom of the hill against retaining walls. There's also a huge cost to that sidewalk and a planting strip or something that could be there. You're going to be going, trying to get the taxpayers to raise their sales tax with the, to fund the Transportation Benefit District, whether that money is used for this or other things. When the public realizes that you're talking about millions or hundreds of thousand dollars, maybe millions, for this sidewalk that they've kept saying they didn't want, you're just going to be damaging your ability to fund other projects and this project. If you can take some of that, maybe the sidewalk, that five feet, maybe it should be invested in having a better buffer between the northbound bike lane and the Mountain Sound Trail, and having a better landscape barrier there. Maybe it's to make each of those bike lanes, maybe another foot or a foot and a half wider. You know, there's a better place to put that pavement than on a sidewalk that doesn't make sense. We don't know how much of this 10-foot possibly we would need. I think we need to have some examples, both on plans and also on the ground, showing where we're talking about the problem of this, and to get a better idea of how much we're cutting into those hillsides, how high the retaining walls are going to have to be to support even this without the south-side sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
My name is Geraldine Carey, and I live on the south side of Newport Way. You can have your right-of-way on my property, but I really think that on the south side of Newport Way, if you cut 10 feet into the hillside, there's going to be just the ugliest introduction to the park, to the trail. I think that if you keep it low, and you use rock, and you go more, take the design more to the wetlands, you have a very appealing entry into that area. It frightens me to think that you could have a 10- or a 20-foot retaining wall just to put in a sidewalk. I think people, you know, I mean, that's our city, that's our road, and to put a sidewalk, possibly with all sorts of things for people to pass through, I think is not a good investment of money. So, I would say, you know, please, take away the 10-foot. We'll pay for it later if we really want it, but I think at this point, I don't think it's necessary. Thank you. Did I say it was in Issaquah? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening on this subject?
My name is Mary Lynch, and I represent a lot of people that have been at the public meetings over the last three years. And I want to let you know that we don't feel like a lot of our input has been heard. We keep coming back and seeing the design, and not our input is not in the design. We did attend and had a large turnout at the earlier meeting for the value engineering. When we learned that, the majority of us there said, we don't think that the sidewalk is necessary in lieu of, you know, what we learned there, and that the price of it and cutting to the hills, and now it's part of the Burisma Park, the majority of the people there, we drew lines on all the drawings, saying, no sidewalks, eliminate those, eliminate the cost. Dave made a really good point. The other thing about that sidewalk there, it's going to get a lot of moisture on it. It's going to be on the north side, it's going to be slippery than heck a large part of the time. If you want to get an idea of what those walls are going to look like, is go on the other side of Lakemond, and where Newport is there. And that's what they're going to have to do if they're going to start cutting that hills. The other thing that's going to happen is what happened at Summer Hill, when they widened the road there for the concept, is the majority, or we lost all of our trees. They weren't in the right-of-way. But because what they had to do with the wall, the trees had to come down because they were damaging them, because they had to come back into the property, and all the roots were killed. So, when you're talking, cutting on that side of the hill, the trees that are there, you're going to have to go back another 20 to 50 feet into the hill and lose all those trees. The other thing we haven't seen clearly from the public works, and we keep asking, is what's happening on the other side of the road. And we keep saying we need to narrow that corridor down. You know, we don't need the sidewalk, we don't need the planter boxes, some of those. We want to save our trees. But if you'll go out and walk along the roadway with what they've done with Riva right now, and all the soil that came in there to build up about six feet of that sidewalk, it's awful. And it goes down into their property a good 50 feet, and also abuts up close to streams and a wetlands. Well, you get closer to Newport Way, you've got all these little tributary streams and Tibbetts Creek. So, we don't even know if, with this wide corridor concept, and with all the insisting that we keep everything exactly as the concept is, and concept means it's an idea, and you look at what you've got and you place it where it can fit, and fit logically, environmentally, and cost-wise. And you're talking, and I don't trust the cost of the city. They're talking $5 million, it's probably going to be $10 million, because most of our projects that I've seen so far are overrun when we do city projects. So, to keep this going down to this 90% completion with the sidewalk there and doing what the public who've attended these meetings has asked not to do, we say we do need a sidewalk to the Burisma property and the entryway there. We need one at the other end from Oak Crest down to the trailhead, and then a good quality crosswalk with an island in the middle there at Riva to get the people back across so they can walk from the transit center. That's what the people have said. You're not listening. And it's getting really frustrating, the amount of hours we have to spend, how many hours into this meeting. If you add all the hours that the public has spent trying to get our voices heard, and they're not heard, it's very disappointing. That's all I can say.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
So, I'm Kate Haynes, and I'm from the Terra Highlands Homeowners Association, which is across from the Revel Senior Housing and Anthology off of Newport, and I'm on the Development Committee of our homeowners association. I send you all my written comments, and you're going to be very happy to know I'm not going to read them again or go through them again. If you promise me that you'll actually read them, so I can report that back to the HOA. I just want to say I'm truly grateful for the kinds of questions you've been asking tonight. I really appreciate it. We've been trying to get answers to a lot of these things, and I appreciate the clarity of the council and your perceptiveness about the nature of the problem. Obviously, this is not something that we want. The only question I'm left with is this, it's still a little muddy to me. What is the minimum amount of time it would take to reach a conclusion about the design, what's needed for the design? I mean, I want to make sure it's not three city councils down the road where we talk about rededicating a right-of-way. I'd rather not see the right-of-way, but if it is, how soon? What is the minimum amount of time that this could actually happen? Thank you so much, I really appreciate everything.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for referencing us to your written material without necessarily going through it again, and I pledge I will read what you wrote. Other folks who want to comment this evening?
So, I have read the critical area study for the wetland on the other side of the road, and actually, we're on the outer edges of that wetland, to my disappointment, because they wanted to put a detention pond down there. So, it's a Class II, not a Category I wetland, and we have significant room for a buffer, and minimal impacts are at this point in time slated for that side of the road. And that does mean that they, rather unfortunately, can put their wetland facilities in the outer edges of that critical area buffer. It also means that you can probably move the road that direction. It might be expensive because there is a definite grade change there, but it's not a grade change that is visible to vast numbers of people from I-90 to South Cove, to everybody who drives Newport Way. So, it's not a signature view into the entrance of Issaquah, like the Burisma property does have. It is very frustrating to come out over and over and over again and write endlessly about what we would like to see happen on that corridor, and we want the trees protected, and we want the minimal impacts possible. Yet, administration and staff keeps absorbing our information and coming back with their own opinion. So, somehow, we have to change the culture of our city so that we don't have to expend as much energy, and yet we get the town that we picture and really adore. Now, I will say I am a happy camper when we can have walking on both sides of the road. But in this situation, you can have a trail in the woods, and you would have a very interesting forest pathway to get around that side of the street if you chose to do that. Or you could take the multipurpose trail on the other side of the road, because there will be easy crossing. As a matter of fact, the consultants had actually come up with a, almost a multimodal wide trail on the Burisma side of the road, but somehow, that never carried forward through as a concept. And it is, again, not been carried forward through this concept. You notice it wasn't presented as an option. A side trail is not part of this discussion, even though it's been brought up by consultants and community. So, why is that? Why aren't we looking at the variety of options that are actually available to us? We're just looking at exactly the same thing that they want again. And, oh, don't get me started. Thank you, bye.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening on this subject before we deliberate on it?
I never thought I would stay this long tonight. I almost fell asleep. But thank you for your time. I'm Tina Conforti, and I live at 1220 Oakwood Place, northwest Issaquah. First, I want to say, you know, I agree with everything what the people previous day said, but I want to touch also on the Riva Tana House. You know, those, the Riva Tana House, you know, the community voice, it should be heard from the city. I think the community knows best what it should fit in that community. At the beginning, we advised those Tana Houses are too close to the road. Yes, the people are in risk when they buy those Tana Houses, because the sidewalk is so near to the street. Besides that, I believe it's that we live right across the trailer of Kinga County, with a whole of the parking cars and a parking lot right across the view. You know, that was a mistake to build those Riva Tana Houses there. Besides that, Oak Crest Drive, it has very difficult time to get out when we have all the other residents along Newport Way taking down, going east in Issaquah. So, please, listen what the voice of the neighborhood tells you. So please, listen what the voice of the neighborhood tells you. That is the best advice that I can give you. Yes, and the thing is, taking 10 feet from the Bergsma property, it's wrong. Because we don't need the sidewalk over there. We've been going well along with what we have now, and with the new road, and everything has been expanded. There is a landscape design over there. How are you going to go through with a landscape design? So you're going to have piece mid here and there. That's not going to look that pretty. So that's just some of community voice. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. All right, is there anyone else who hasn't yet spoken, who would like to speak on this issue, before we move to deliberation? Any further public comment? Third call? No? All right, so we will move to discussing it. And I will again, ask interim city acting, acting interim? Acting, City Administrator Snyder, to give us an idea as to what you are hoping to get from us at this late hour, this evening.
Thank you. Technically, it's interim, just, but no big deal.
Thank you.
So I think what we're hoping to do tonight is have, as Sheldon said in the beginning of his presentation, have a conversation about the right-of-way dedication. And he had a couple of options that the administration is putting forward. We're not making, we're not asking council for a decision tonight on those options. What we are asking for is a reaction to those options. So discussion, if you have questions about, more questions about dedicating the right-of-way, letting us know what is important to you, and having us understand, you know, what in your mind are the next steps that we should be pursuing in regarding the right-of-way? Should we return to council at a future date with an agenda bill for dedication of right-of-way, or does council not want to consider that at this time? Your thoughts and reactions to those two options would be very helpful for us as we plan our next steps. Thank you.
Thank you for teaming that up. With that, who wants to dive into the fray? That would be Councilmember Winterstein, I believe.
I actually have a couple of questions for Sheldon. I think, as I've contemplated this, I've been able to create a drawing of that, with a right-of-way and a roadway laid in there, and try to better visualize what I was trying to get at earlier. Sheldon, there might be some information that's missing. First of all, I don't have really any relief or land feature information that's in this 10-feet strip. On either, or even what the kind of slope or sensitive areas may exist on the north side either. So I don't, I don't know, now theoretically, it all could be very steep, the full 10 feet, but I'm very sure that's not the case, though I know it's definitely true in significant portions. And the idea that we would maybe, you know, the best engineering is to cut into something that's sort of steep like that, is like, ah, jeez, maybe not. But until you know what's actually on the other side, which we may be more valuable to protect, maybe not visually, but for other very important properties, is just as important, I don't know what they're competing with. And so, just that relief information, so I'm talking about the slope of the land, and where that is along that piece, and also the information on the other side. Because what I did hear from you, and I'd like to get some confirmation on this, is that there will be trade-offs. People, you're going to, your team who's doing this design are going to have to make some trade-offs. There may be impacts on within the right-of-way, even at the 51-foot width. There's, you know what, we have impacts on both the north and the south side. We have to decide what is the best, you know, which one can we mitigate, and which one we're not going to. We're just going to completely avoid that impact. And, so I'm assuming that kind of goes into it. And, so, but what I don't know is, what type of policy or guidelines are people are using to guide them? I was thinking of something earlier, and it was mentioned in comments. You know, I do think that, like, a visual impact on the south side probably should have a different weighting than a non-visual, visible, I should say, visible impact on the north side, when all of the things are considered equal. Do I shift the road over to the north or to the south? The impacts on either side are about the same, but this one would have a large visual impact. You know what, there should be some guidance to the design that's being done with considerations like that. So without knowledge, more knowledge about the slope and the land that we're talking about that's in this buffer, and with really no knowledge about what's on the north side either, and then without any clear, I'm not aware of kind of guidelines such as I just talked about, as far as, as, you know, when you have to make a trade-off of a decision because of impacts on one side or the other, you know, here's some criteria to use to help you make a decision. And I think a very visual impact, such as a larger retaining wall on the south side, is something, I'd say, yeah, let's try to minimize that completely, or minimize that, if the impact on the north side is something we absolutely can mitigate in a fair way. So that criteria, I'm not sure what you're working with at all, what your team may be working with. That would help me quite a bit, because, because I'm also going to assume that there are places, when, you know, if we go 10 feet into the Bergsma, that's really no big deal, because there isn't anything sloped, and that there is probably, there may be some, there might be something on the north side. You know, we really do want to preserve that. We don't want to go any further over there. I don't know, but, but there may be areas. I understand the argument for, let's set aside 10 feet, so that we have the flexibility and where, you know, to do the best design. But I don't know the criteria you would be using to help you choose when to use the full 10 feet, or when to do a trade-off on the north side versus the south side.
Councilmember Walsh?
So generally, I like a, I like to choose a situation in regards to right-of-way, that is going to provide us with the most flexibility and the least cost. I would love to have already had a true council conversation about, you know, whether or not we would have to put a wall there, or if there's any way that we could avoid putting a wall there. I would love to have already had that conversation. But it sounds like we might not have time for that, before we have to receive the land and put the covenant in. So I guess, as a risk averse person, who would not want to have to go back in and buy back the land if we needed right-of-way, I would rather dedicate right-of-way, and set a date for a conversation when we, so that we would know when we were talking about it, and what the public would know when we're talking about it. I think that would be my preferred, but gosh, I've looked at the wall past Lakemont Boulevard, and I certainly don't want to see that in our community.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. So you were asking for reactions. The first reaction is that, it's not at all clear to me why we need this 10-foot buffer. There's a statement here in the memo about the current right-of-way width, for most of this corridor, is 60 feet, which is not wide enough to accommodate improvements identified in the corridor concept. I think that that's referring to the 2017 corridor concept. I think we've had a lot of public and community input since then about the sidewalk on the Bergsma side, and I think we've had also the value engineering study, which has provided a lot of information about alternatives. So, as far as the alternative that was identified by the value engineering study, that was 51 to 53 feet, that fits within 60 feet, so I think we have additional right-of-way currently. It's not at all clear to me. Also, as far as the right-of-way that we have, how steep are those areas? What, if we just use that right-of-way we have right now, what are the walls going to look like for that? Because it's probably already going to need, or potentially already going to need retaining walls on some of those areas, if, as was mentioned in public comments, it's already cutting into some areas that are steep slopes, as it is. So it's not at all clear to me why we need the 10 feet. It's also not clear to me how steep these areas are that we're potentially cutting into. There's also, in our presentation, there was the drawing saying, you probably don't need the 10 feet, there's a dotted line that you'll need somewhere in between. That seems compelling to me, that we should not put the 10 feet into the right-of-way, because we don't need that. And I think it sets us down a path for this sidewalk, in a place that I don't think we need a sidewalk, and I don't think it makes sense for a sidewalk. And then the last thing, last issue I have, is that there is a statement about, this option would increase the city's project costs and timelines, as any property not dedicated as right-of-way ahead of time will be constrained with covenants and federal requirements. So that's a statement about the cost of not dedicating the right-of-way now. But it doesn't actually give us any information about what the estimated cost would be to acquire it later, if we needed to. And then it also doesn't give us an estimate of the cost for what the increased cost it's setting us down the path for. Because if we increase this, and then we put a sidewalk, that is actually a much more expensive option, I'm fairly certain, than acquiring a small amount of a right-of-way later on, to not put in a sidewalk along this entire stretch. But we actually don't even have that information. So I think we should get that information, but I also don't think there should be a sidewalk there. I think there's a lot of, it's very unclear to me why we would need to have 10 feet of right-of-way for the value engineered concept, and I'm interested in that one. Because I think a lot has changed since the initial 2017 one, including the city's acquisition of Bergsma's open space.
Councilmember Ray?
Okay, so I'm listening to this discussion, and I'm hearing that the Bergsma right-of-way is really becoming a proxy for the Newport corridor concept. And what we're hearing is, don't dedicate the right-of-way to this, but what people are really saying is, don't build a sidewalk, don't build a bike lane on the south side of Newport Way. So instead, I think we're having the wrong discussion, quite honestly. The discussion really isn't about, do we need to dedicate this right-of-way? The question really is, from what I'm hearing from the public, is, is the 2017 Newport concept, corridor concept, the correct vision for that piece of roadway? And from what I'm hearing from the people who live in that area, is a pretty resounding no.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Hunt's comments, and so I'm not going to repeat them, but I will add that, based on the early, I'm not persuaded that, that I haven't found a, been not persuaded that we have a compelling argument that we need to dedicate a 10 feet. I'd like to suggest that the comments that we heard earlier in the evening about timing for the grants and the covenants, and when we would have to accept everything, seems to be pretty close to the, potentially pretty close to the time where we had initially said we would have the 90% design done. And I would suggest that there may be opportunities that we can work on that 90% design, and maybe buy us some time on the acceptance of the grants, and see what we can do to be a little bit more certain about why we might or might not need 10 feet. I'm having a hard time, I think proxy is a good word, I'm having a hard time not thinking that having this, having the Bergsma property there is just sort of an easy way for us to not make some hard decisions about 90% design. And I'm also uncomfortable with the notion that we would, I agree with the comments that I've heard about, what are we going to, and in the comments we've received in emails, concerned about dedicating right-of-way, and then pulling it back later in future councils. So even if I, if I had to give an answer tonight, it would be no. But in the future, if I want to be persuaded to say yes, I would at least need to have some constraints on that, and maybe some conditions on whatever we adopt, some very, very clear guidelines about why we did it. Not to the point that I would say yes, tonight it would be no, but I have some thoughts floating around in my head about how we might accomplish something if we had to, but it's not quite formulated yet. But I'm not persuaded. Thanks.
Deputy Council President Batis?
Thank you. So typically, when we're talking about right-of-way, you know, the less cost and flexibility really makes all of the sense in the world, but we've, we've really had, regardless of where we were at with the design, we've had so much community feedback about the sidewalk, cutting into the hill. And what Councilmember Winterstein talked about is where my mind was going as well, in terms of perhaps that having some criteria, because if we are having to extend, and we're looking at trade-offs, if we could have some agreement around that criteria, I think that might be helpful. And I think just getting more information and having an opportunity to, even visuals, to see what some of the things are that we're actually talking about, I think would be helpful. Regardless of where we land, and I'm still really thinking that through, but I, I'm very stuck on, you know, the sidewalk and cutting into the hill, that regardless of what we do, if we go down the road with the right-of-way decision, and then we're going to come back and revisit it, if that ends up being the case, I would really want there to be a date that that was coming forward, so council knew when they were going to have an opportunity to talk about that, and the public knew as well, or community. And I'm starting to think about, you know, just basically a different way, and I, sorry, I also don't have the thoughts completely formulated, but that there may be a way that we can go forward, but maybe have some constraints. I mean, we've heard loud and clear from the community about their concerns on the Bergsma side. So I think as we're, as we're going forward right now, we just have, you know, this option in front of us, and I think we need more.
So, a couple of thoughts. Interesting, I also have lots of question marks on this. I don't really understand what retaining walls we would need if we didn't take this, if we didn't set this 10 feet aside. I don't understand what retaining walls we would need if we did. I don't really understand this whole trail access, and evidently, there's going to be a backwards path through here, I don't know anything about that. I don't really understand what the intended corridor use is. I know what it was in 2017. I don't understand the financial impacts of waiting to make the decision. So I have a lot of question marks. I'm not sure that those question marks mean that, in the absence of that information, that I'm ready to say no. I think Chris brought up a, Councilmember Ray, brought up a super important point, which is, I think this, let's be honest, this is a proxy for a larger conversation. Five years ago, the folks who lived locally off of Newport Way would have loved it if we would have just slowed the road down and kept all regional throughput traffic off these roads, and not developed the way that the development has occurred. And it has been painful for those folks to see the transformation of their area. We have done a number of things, I'm not, I don't buy entirely the argument that the city- I'm not, I don't buy entirely the argument that the city has been unresponsive. We slowed the speed limits down. We, we built features into the road to slow the road down. We took out sort of the, the regional transportation aspect of that road. So there's things we've done, but I know that the community still feels like the north side of that road doesn't look anything like it used to look. And, and I get that that causes a lot of pain, and I think that that issue is related to the issue that's in front of us tonight. And I think we should be honest that that's part of it. You know, I normally like sidewalks on both sides of the road, but I look at Black Nugget, I look at that tiny little sidewalk on the base of that retaining wall that I've never seen a human being use. It's possible someone uses it, but I've never seen it. So it's a complicated issue. You know, I, I am sympathetic to the administration's argument that this is only the first of several steps and that for us to say yes today would in no way say that we were then going to go put a sidewalk in. But I'm just, you asked for feedback, and that's my feedback, which is there's still a whole bunch of question marks. And I think that there's a lot of things that go into the fact that the local users of Newport Way are not happy with how it's turning out, and I think that that contributes to this issue in front of us tonight.
Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to comment again. I want to echo something that Stacy said. There is a sense from the information that we have that 90% complete is, the timing of that may, could inform this decision and not, and still give, allow us the latitude of working with the county's schedule for the grant and the covenants being placed and the acceptance of the grant. I think I'd like to understand that a little bit better, to see, hey, you know, we think we're landing here. The second point I want to make is that, you know, Sheldon, it was your own staff that said, you know what, we can do it without the sidewalk. It will reduce the retaining walls, it will reduce the impact on the south side of the road. It was your own staff, the value engineering, that proposed that. So I'm assuming that that's what you're putting into the design. And, and, and so you're grabbing the mic, I'd like to hear about that because I think that's, that's a very important, because we're immediately right there reducing the amount of width that we need within the right-of-way, therefore the, and therefore the impacts to the land. So I'm assuming that's going to be done, and it'd be, boy, if we could actually get that design at a time, so you can answer that question for me, will we can consider that as part of this question? That would be wonderful.
So as part of the information that was presented on the 15th of April, what staff said was that we were going to eliminate the landscape buffer, not the sidewalk. Sidewalk was remaining in the design on the southern side, just a clarification, but the effect is the same. Now, there's a person walking on that side. That was the, that was the recommendation of the VE study.
That's right. So the value engineering study, which this is the slide from the April 15 meeting.
Yes, but that wasn't the direction that the administration was going. The administration went with a compromise between that and the other, which was, we'll remain with a sidewalk, but we'll eliminate the landscaping. But yes, it's physically possible to eliminate both and reduce the heights of those walls dramatically.
You know, you're right. I stand corrected. I see that there are, there's, the next slide in here does have, it says, say, maintain a minimum of a five-foot sidewalk.
Yes.
And, and, and then the minimum corridor width is then 54 to 56 feet. Okay, so that was, so that, so are you telling me that that's what your team is designing to?
That's what's currently moving forward in design.
When are they going to be done?
The schedule was to have 90% by the end of the year. I don't know exactly where they are, but I would imagine they're getting close. I'd have to check in with staff on that.
So you'll get back to us on that question?
I will.
Other deliberation thoughts, feedback from the administration on this question? Last, we're only, you know, whatever, four hours in at this point. I mean, okay, well, I want to thank first and foremost, it looks like interim city administrator has thoughts, questions, comments?
So I wanted to say thank you for sticking with us for this, these two topics, both great discussions and for the feedback that you provided. What I've heard from a number of councilmembers about the right-of-way dedication is that there's some interest in, so there's still a few questions about costs of the alternative that's been provided, so costs of whether right-of-way dedication would need to be, would need, whether right-of-way would need to be dedicated after the grant was accepted. And so what are the costs to that? I've heard a couple councilmembers ask that question. And also what I've heard is from a couple of councilmembers, the idea of criteria, of understanding what goes into, how the road is aligned within the right-of-way, more information on the adjacent topography and critical areas, and perhaps what are these, I'm going to use the word criteria again, but what are other considerations or conditions under which maybe right-of-way dedication would be considered that would guide the administration in terms of future design of the roadway or, or make known what the priorities are among council when considering that? So I heard a couple, I, a couple of comments to that end. We haven't fully developed those. I don't know that there's an appetite to do that tonight, but, but I think that there are a few things that we've heard that we're going to try to figure out what our plan is to follow up with you about that. Thank you.
Great. Okay. So I was going to say, I want to thank the members of the public who stuck with us for four hours, the four of you evidently at home who are watching, because you can find that out online, and all the members of the city staff who were here and covered a lot of technical, a lot of technical information on chief major topics, and my fellow council members who stayed focused and thoughtful in their comments for four hours. Councilmember Winterstein.
Totally, I just have to say, this is the best facilitated study session I've ever been to. Just wanted to let you know that.
Gosh, thank you so much. And with that, we are adjourned.